Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting in Sussex County Board of Chosen Freeholders September 20, 2018, 9 o'clock a.m., East Orange Park and Sussex County Technical School. Have roll call, please.
Freeholder Graham.
Here.
Freeholder Lizara.
Here.
Freeholder Pizzella. Freeholder Director Lo.
President.
Freeholder VR.
Here.
You want to add?
Dr. Andrews.
Here.
Okay, for the Sussex County Technical School Board of Education roll call. Mr. Cofrancesco?
Here.
Ms. Shape?
Here.
Mrs. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Dr. Lamonti?
Here.
Thank you.
Sussex County Board of Education, Dr. Andrews.
Here.
Dr. Crowley.
Here.
Mr. Curzio.
Here.
Mrs. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Hoplin.
Here.
Dr. Lamonti.
Here.
Dr. Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Scanlon.
Here.
Mr. Speckhart.
Here.
Dr. Connelly.
Here.
That moment of silence must look to flag, please. I'm sorry, I didn't do this.
For the Newton County Council, Councilman Dixon.
Here.
Councilwoman Diglio. Deputy Mayor Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Schlafer. Mayor LaWaw.
Here.
Right now, that moment of silence must look to flag, please. Which ladies?
To the right of the United States Center. In this public, public stance, one nation under God, in this whole, liberty, and justice for all.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P.L. 1975, adequate notice is provided by Section 3 of the Chapter 231, P.L. 1975, has been made by regular mail. Such notice being submitted on September 6, 2018, from the administrative center of the county of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, New Jersey, into the following: New Jersey Herald, New Jersey Sunday Herald, Star Ledger, WSSR Radio, WNJ Radio. It is also posted on the bulletin board maintaining the administrative center for public announcements, and as submitted to Sussex County Clerk for the want of the said act.
I read the declaration for the Sussex County Technical School. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act is enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of, and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In the accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education of the Vocational School in the county of Sussex has caused notices to be published, adequate notice has been provided. Such notice was placed in the New Jersey Herald in November 8, 2017.
And on behalf of the Tied and New York Open Public Meetings Act statement, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting, special meeting, was given to the chief speakers of record and posted on the official board on September 10, 2018.
Thank you, everyone. The Freeholder Board has a certain agenda that we are required by administrative code to follow, so we have more stuff in our agenda than the rest of you do, so just bear with me while I just do this, please. Freeholders, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Pizzaro.
Second.
By Pizzaro, discussion. All those in favor?
All right.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. We have proclamations, there's presentations, we have a presentation of the citing of the career in technical education within Sussex County. Thank you, everyone, for coming here this morning. I appreciate all the wards coming. I was the one who asked for this meeting to occur. Thought it would be a good idea to get all four parties who have the most interest in this together at one place so that we can discuss it. I've had conversations with Newton, I've had conversation with the VOTAC, I've had conversations with SCCC and various members thereof, but I've not had an opportunity, none of us have, to all sit in a room and discuss things. To add in, we all have an open meeting, and so here we are this morning, and thank you, everyone, for taking the time on Thursday morning to come here, I really appreciate it. To kick this off, probably best if SCCC begins, tells us a little bit about the project, and then we just have an open forum that's good.
Freeholder Director, we have a public session from the floor, is that a piece of the agenda to be received, had that done first?
Okay, we can do that if we want, my agenda shows it second, so I think that one of the problems we have is four agendas, so things are a little complicated, so why don't we do that? We'll kick it off, we'll have two public sessions, one at the beginning and one at the end, like we normally do, and then, all right. Public session from the floor. Please note, everyone is asked to keep their comments for five minutes or less, and only address issues regarding agenda items followed by three-minute response time from the Freeholder Board. Please state your name and put your name and municipality on the sign sheet. I have motion to open the floor to the public. Motion to fill in a second by Pizzaro, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the floor is open to the public. Do we just sign in on the signing sheet? And we have timekeepers over here with a red and a yellow card.
Good morning, John Snyder from Sandiskin. My first question has to do with the name of this school. I see Sussex County Technical School there, but in trinity of the high school agenda, it's the vocational school Board of Education. Which is the correct title?
The title of the school is Sussex County Technical School, but we have vocational mission, which we can't come away with, so we use the term vocational school as the mission statement.
Okay, there's a mission statement here which indicates we also have adult students, so it's not a high school, it's a school of technology.
Yes.
And it doesn't just provide secondary school education, it also has post-secondary, which the agenda item today is talking about the college now also getting involved, so taxpayers will be paying for two technical schools, it looks like to me. The pool, there's a building that holds the pool, which is no longer functional. When was that last used as a pool?
This is my fifth year here at Sussex Tech, and the pool was not functioning by your eyes, perhaps about 2011 is what it was the commission.
The reason I'm asking that question is, we're talking about from a college's point of view, we're spending quite a few million dollars on a building that we do not own, yet we have this empty pool building on this campus, this technical school campus that we do own, and I know they have cost factors here, how much per square foot, I wonder what it would be for renovating a building that we already own. I have no problem with the two institutions working together, I can see where maybe the welding, the shop portion would be done here, and maybe more the book, classroom learning could be done for college at a higher level, but I know that we're talking about getting involved in another piece of property, and I for one am not happy still with what's going on financially from the solar project, where I believe in this year's budget alone, we're still paying $2.1 million towards a solar project that's supposed to make money. And also, this is for the county college, you say 50% of your funding for this project will come from Chapter 12 dollars, approved in 2014 and the $2,000, oh, $2,015, excuse me, bond funds reassigned or saved from other projects, reassigned, same thing with the number below at 40%, talking about Chapter 12 dollars from 2017, 2018, reassigned, as a taxpayer. I wonder why, what's going on? You got money in the first place to do a project, and then guess someone decided, oh, let's not do that, we'll save the money, we'll get more money from the taxpayers in the future, we'll do what we want with it. I don't like it. If you're giving money for a project, that project should be done. If the project isn't done, return the money and lower our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Can we turn the reverb down, please?
Is there anything, excuse me, is there anything with the, okay. Speaker's having to be closer to the mic.
Good morning.
Closer to the mic, okay, thank you. Good morning, my name is Scott Cloud, I'm the independent auditor for the Sussex County College, and I just wanted to just make a few statements regarding the financial condition, because I understand at the last meeting there were a couple of questions. My firm, Whiston Company, has been the auditor for about six or seven years, and the last several audits have shown improved financial position. When we took the job over, probably seven years ago or so, there were financial issues that we identified, and have worked with the college over the years to develop a strategic plan in terms of improving those financial positions. And through the June 30, 2017 financial statements, we have given unmodified opinions, which are clean opinions, which means all the information that was requested as part of the audit were auditable, and we were able to put that opinion on it, and based on our preliminary work done for the 2018 audit, we continue to see the same trend and improvement in increasing their bottom net position. So I just wanted to say a few words this morning, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
I actually am in full support of full funding for all education. The education system has myriad of benefits, not to mention the incalculable significance to our community's social cohesion, which was the point of actually making public education a law in 1865, just short of avoiding the Civil War, are you on the point? I'm not here to denigrate the importance of VOTAC, I'm not here to denigrate the importance of trade schools. However, given our fiscal reality, we must consider what is best for everyone, yes? The fact is, VOTAC is not centrally located as the colleges. VOTAC is not centered in the hub of our cabinet, nor does it have access to our limited mass transportation system the way Newton does, without adding additional costs to the taxpayers to get students here. Also, while VOTAC is located here at the corner of 94 and White Lake Road, the college, the community college in Maguireville, lays the convergence of five major throughways, and has had access to the aforementioned mass transportation. Newton is also, as I always understood, driving a tow truck in this county for six years now, is the commercial hub of the county. There's one Deli around here, there's plenty of stores to frequent for people who are potentially going to the Maguire Center in the future, so that would also bring economic development to Spring Street, which I understand has been a project of the Freeholders for quite some time. Furthermore, developments in technology have created the job market of increasing fluctuation that now calls for one to change careers more than once in a lifetime. I'm living proof of that, I'm 38-years-old, currently enrolled in a master's program at Ross Cracker's Newark. I did graduate from Sussex County Community College on a dean's list with my associates. Having the ability to get to a school that was close by with a two-year-old, by the time, a one-year-old and a three-year-old, and being able to get there made a significant difference. I now have to drive an hour and a half to go to school in traffic both ways, and I work two full-time jobs while raising those two children, and this is what people now have to do to get a college education in the United States of America. So, the idea of making it easier and more affordable, I think, is in keeping with trying to bring an end to a level of austerity that is creating conditions for not just millions, millions of Americans and people in this county. I also think it's rather ill-advised to bring grown adults onto a campus that while not a high school, does have 14, 15, 16-year-old kids on campus. I don't know if the plan is to only allow adults here at night, or to keep the adult sectioned off, or to integrate adults, but I just feel like that that would call for an increase in security, as well as construction that would need to be done for parking and for facilities, logistics which should back this program up for years to come, and ultimately end up costing more money. And finally, I would just like to say that, and I know this isn't a popular thing to say, and never is, but the Board of Chosen Freeholders, I'm sorry to say, you're all in direct violation of your oath of office and have been for years. You divested yourself a long time ago from fully funding the community college, which, when you sign your oath of office statement, which must be notarized to prove authenticity of the signatory, it says that you swear to uphold the state constitution. 18A 64A-22, the state's constitution, the constitution leaves you responsible for 15% of operating costs for the college. You were $3 million short on that number when I was at the college in 2016. So you continuously keep divesting yourself from educational programs, which I understand for taxpayers in the county who are of advanced age and living on a fixed income can be very scary, but then perhaps we shouldn't have voted for a gas increase of 25 cents so that we could save millionaires on their, you know, their state attacks. We should have thought more about providing a future for the young people in this county.
One minute.
If you want to have a viable future in this county, if you want to have a county that grows, you need to provide opportunity. The Maguire Center is an opportunity. I hope you will see that, move past all of the politics and the power trips and the ego games, and just get down to doing what's best for the community, for the youth of the community, because I don't know if you noticed, we're all leaving. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Before you begin, it's very difficult, here up here there's a bad echo, so please speak in slow voice, make out your words. You bring the microphone over.
Can you hear it?
Barely.
Good morning, okay, hi. My name is Ati Shaw, and I am a resident and a business owner. I'm Newton alum on this, my husband, Dr. Shaw, and I have been in Newton for 20 years, and as such, I fully support Sussex County Community College's second campus to be housed at Maguire property in Newton. Besides being an excellent idea to have a second campus, offering two-year programs in the area of auto, machine, and culinary, the campus being housed at Maguire property would greatly benefit the downtown Newton area with more foot traffic and exposure. This particular area is a central hub, many patrons visit larger stores, Home Depot, Marshalls, Walmart, and I believe the Maguire location is aptly suited for more potential and has better advantage, as people already come to this area for other reasons. Unfortunately, VOTAC is in just a more rural, obscure area. It's also a definite advantage to have this second campus just minutes away from Sussex County Community College and Thor Labs, of which Thor Labs' funding of $400,000 is a fantastic gift, an opportunity for Newton to possibly. I personally thank John Connolly for his spirit toward this project, also Thor Labs and all the other businesses in and around Spring Street that are, which is a vibe to make Newton more prosperous. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to say this, and a nice morning.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good morning. Can you hear me? Okay, that's better. My name is Lisa Carlson, I am employed here at Sussex Tech, but I am also a taxpayer in this county, and my statement is, while I understand the second campus would be something that the college would like to get to, it's my understanding, from a business perspective, that your second campus should be more than just a mile away from your preliminary campus. You're looking to bring people from the county to this college. Bringing that program here will allow people from other parts of the county, not just Newton, to come and experience the programs. Vernon is one of the largest towns in this county. It is not convenient for many people from Sussex, Wantage, and Vernon to travel all the way to Newton. It's more convenient for them to find a program here. Something to consider is Newton is not the only town in this county that is serviced by the county college. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good morning. Kevin Shaw, I'm a resident for 20 years, as I spoke earlier, I am a business owner. I do support this, this consideration for Newton. I think as the Board of Freeholders, a part of the responsibility is really considering the vibrance of Sussex County. Clearly, I think most will agree, by the number of people that are here this morning, this is a significant issue, this is a turning point. Newton, the center square, has lost, the Dell Building is empty, Newton Trust is empty, Maguire's been active for six years. This has the potential, I see, of bringing students, but also, the agricultural consideration and culinary consideration of this cannot be overlooked. The vision is vibrancy. The vision is people coming and supporting our local farmers, which we are the garden state, I believe, and we do more than cows. I'm a healthcare practitioner, I see huge opportunity for the support from the hospital in Newton, and Atlantic Healthcare, and I also see a lot of support from Thor Labs, which clearly needs machinists, which is asking for this support. The vibrancy of Newton has changed, from what I hear, I've only been here 20 years, but I understood it to be a mom-and-pop place, two ice cream shops, many local businesses that supported it. My brother-in-law, who's an Ivy League graduate and a business owner in New York City, is very much on the pulse of New York City, took a bike ride with me and my boys to the Maguire campus on Saturday, and I told him what the vision was. He said to me, it's a no-brainer, it's brilliant. Yeah, he is an Ivy League grad, a successful business person, realizing that New York City's retail is done. The landscape of towns are changing. Asheville is an artist's town, Princeton is an artist's town, food is art, working with your hands creates artists. It's not just about the machines, it's about these people seeing opportunity to take on retail space, to present their skill, whether it be painting a motorcycle gas tank, whether it be creating something artistic with metal, they'll learn these trades. I see it as a potential to bring lots of folks to the food scene, and develop a food scene, and actually bring some life into the center square. I understand their challenges, I understand there are lots of considerations, I am thankful for the fact that everybody's gathered here today. I took my morning off, part morning off, to be here, because I think it's critically important. There is a crossroads. Where Newton, the county seat, is heading is not necessarily in a great direction, there's 45% vacancy on Spring Street. We've lost three major land people in the middle of town. This has the opportunity to bring youth and families that support that youth, and people that have interest in food and farmers together. This actually is a real opportunity for a paradigm shift, retail is over, we have to think a little differently about this. Some points that were made earlier about security with regards to adults and students, high school students, is a consideration I have not made, and I think it's valid. I do believe that this is a high school, I think it's understood is that way throughout the county. It is disconnected from Newton, the benefit of having a second campus in Newton is revitalization and an opportunity to consider revitalization for the town. If the two major players in Sussex County are asking for this, and they are the major players, which is the hospital and Thor Labs, there are others that I'm sure have interest in this just the same. It is about a renaissance. I respect the Board of the College for taking an initiative to go outside the box, and I appreciate Dr. Connelly for taking some risk, and the efforts that he's put forward to bring, and all of your efforts for doing the diligence that's required to try to make an opportunity like this happen. There's lots to be considered. I look forward to hearing the further information so that this could be better understood. I thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
My office is about two blocks south of the proposed campus, where there's very little to eat, so I did notice with interest that there might be a restaurant coming to that site, but that isn't why I got up to call. I am a states and trusts attorney, and with every client who comes into my office, I do a very detailed financial snapshot. I need to know what they have and what they don't have. And the picture that I see day in and day out of longtime Sussex County families tells me that many of them, most of them, are still very much mired in the 2018 recession, and I'm seeing it over generations. Most of the time, people who come to me are either in their 50s or 60s, or, and starting to think about retirement, or they're quite a bit older, their 70s, 80s, sometimes even 90s, and they are still supporting the next generation, the next two generations, they're all living in one house, and scraping pennies together to get by. So I'm always interested to see vocational training provided locally, because what I'm seeing in the people, some of them who come into my office, is generations of no skills. Now, these people also cannot afford cars, props, props, I should say, oh, one props. They might be sharing one among their three generations. If this program was offered in the center of Newton, the students who attend could get there by, possibly, by mass transportation, or they could live in downtown Newton and walk to this campus, and if that was offered here at this site, that would not be true, there would be a transportation of the four. And I see this over and over. We do have many county residents that are affluent, I'm not saying this is all of Sussex County, but it's very disturbing to me that our long-time families, the people that have been here for generations, the people that want to stay in Sussex County, their kids cannot find a way to do that without working wage jobs. So I am speaking to encourage you to find a way to make this work on Maguire campus. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Del Mcusso, educator, and my point this morning is, what a great opportunity to give the next motion in their life to our 18, 19, 20, 30-year-olds, 40-year-olds, to make a difference in their professions. Many times, one of the things that happens is, after 52 years, by the way, in the education business, I've dealt with kids, I've just asked them, what are you thinking of doing with yourself? They don't know, and if you had to ask a high school freshman that, they have no clue at all, but down the line, as juniors and seniors, they want to make a decision. Some of them want to go on to a four-year institution, and some of them don't want to do that at all, some of them want to go into things like mechanics. We have one member of our family who's going to be going to school, to a school run by Peter Benz, and trucking, he... Peter Benz, a trucking, he has no idea to go on to any of the other colleges in the state of New Jersey. By choice, students, I guess it'd be 18-year-olds since we're talking about the college, they really, really get serious, and their personal commitment to what they need in education for their future, it becomes a parallel issue. And of course, as you all know, and I'm sure with all members of your family, you've dealt with what it costs now for an education. It's pretty horrifying when you look at the sticker shop at the actual. It's an opportunity now for all of you to think ahead. What was the old saying? I remember one of my English classes, "Old fortune favors the bold." Maybe now we need to take some bold steps and think about the opportunity for our older students now, the issue we brought up with the high school-age kid, with the college-age kid. And that is a true issue. It's not a good thing to mix. And the fact that we have a technical school here in Sussex County, what a great opportunity. But then again, you have all these fine schools. Let me tell you, after 52 years in the business, I've been around and seen a lot of schools. Kids who are brought up here in Sussex County are just so fortunate. They have really good schools, all communities, and they try to be responsible, all the school districts, with the dollar amounts that they're given. So I encourage you to support the opportunity to expand the program at the college. Think ahead, and you've got a great facility in there at the McGuire Chevrolet dealership. You're set with lifts and whatever other equipment you have. You can just jump right in there and start doing some things. And it's going to be one of those deals where you're going to find out that if it is successful, you're going to have a lot of people want to go there. It's going to give them an option. And the final thing that I want to say is that, thinking ahead, I've been here since 1967 in Newton. I never knew the town existed until I got to college, set up my student teaching, and I've been here since, and been very, very happy up here. I see a lot of happy kids come out. And yeah, you have your kids who want to go out, and they'll say, "I can't wait to get out of Sussex County," but eventually they come back. And why not give this opportunity to kids that make a decision, "Well, maybe I want to go into the campus. Maybe I want to go into any number of subjects that are offered by the county college." I want a great opportunity to financially help these people out. Thank you very, very much for your time.
Good morning. Can you guys hear me okay? I feel like the horizon commercial is filling me out. Okay, so I'm here today, and I want to just say, so many thanks for seeing me. I'm a resident of Sparta. In the interest of full disclosure, I'm also on the governing body and currently serving as a deputy mayor. I do hold other roles also in different organizations in the county. But what I'm talking about here today reflects my own personal opinions and values and statement. But it is based on experiences that I've had for a number of years, both living in the county and serving on different boards. So what I want to talk about today is the return on investment. All of us, regardless of which board that you sit on, you know that it's always problematic, and there's many times when we have to spend money on things that are necessary, or they're deemed mandatory by different things. There are few times when we really get the opportunity to see a return on investment with such significance and impact as the one that's sitting before you today. To be able to have a return on investment, not only that could be positive as far as numbers and money for years to come, but the return on investing in our community, investing in our students, investing in our families, investing in our businesses, investing in a path forward for Sussex County that's been really quite great for quite some time. For any of us that have attended any kind of meetings at the Freeholder level over the years, one of the biggest concerns is how are we going to address the amount of people that are forced to leave this county? Whether it be that they can't afford to live here anymore, or simply there's just no opportunity. We are presented now with a situation where we have a tremendous economy during which we have a lot of growth going on here in Sparta, but also in Sussex County. Wouldn't it be great if we could partner with the college and have everyone that's employed on this construction site, and everyone that's employed in the jobs that all of this new construction is going to create? Wouldn't it be great if they could all be filled by people coming out of college, starting at the tech high school, and then going to the college and then staying here? So I would like to just say and point out, if you look at places like Long Beach, if you look at places like Warristown 20 years ago, these are places that also had a cloudy future, but it took people to step up and say, "You know what? We're going to invest here. We're going to take the chance." And one investor was a catalyst for another, for another for another. And before you know it, these areas were transformed into iconic places that now serve as beacons of hope. They have fortified futures. So I would just say to everyone here, please, take advantage of the opportunity in front of you. This is a great opportunity to show the residents where we stand collectively, where you stand, and where you can really have a lot of return on investment for decades and decades to come, in the people and the future of the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to call?
Hi, I'm Brian Ward. I'm an automotive instructor here at Sussex Tech. Also been coming to this school since 1979. I have a family member here almost every couple of years, so this has been in my life. One of the things that I've heard here today is, are we trying to save a town of Newton? Or are we in the business we're supposed to be in, which is educating students, whether it be adults or kids? That's my question. It seems like if you build it, they will come. Well, we saw how it worked out when they said, "Put solar in, and you'll save money." That happened. It's always seemed to me that we've been pitted against each other. It's been the college and Sussex Tech. The reason that is because the gentlemen and ladies that sit up there fund us. We only have a certain pool of money. And I agree with the gentleman that was in here before. We've been underfunded. So we, well, look at our pool. It's collapsing. You go and take a tour today, put a hard hat on, it's falling down. No one deserves it. So what I'm asking, or I'm going to propose to the colleges, no one is non-gifted. Let's work together. Let's come together for the common cause, not to save a town, but to educate. That is what we're in the business of doing. So here's how we would do it. We have a shop that needs expansion because it's unsafe, it's too small, but we have a desire and a need for it. Freeholders are not going to give us money to expand that. So here's my option to the college. It's going to take you several years to get going, as far as maybe funding and doing that type of stuff. So what I propose is, this is what we would do. Let's expand the auto shop at Sussex Tech. Let's give the college part of their space. Give us in return some footprint for a classroom and for the shop. You'll have your space, we'll have ours. We could bring our other auto shop up to mine, and we could expand building trades. In return, you don't have to wait three or four years to get your program up and running. Come sit with us. We'll bring you into my program now and tonight for adults. We'll get you ATEP certified, and we'll start your program next semester. No waiting. We come together, we work together, that cause for education is completed, we save on tax money, we're not building it, and maybe they will come. They're already here. That would be my suggestion. That's my offer to the college. Let's sit and have that discussion. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dora Hennigan. I've been a resident of Sussex County in Newton, New Jersey, for over 30 years. I have three children, have gone through the school system here in Newton and in the county. I've been an employee of Sussex County Community College for 17 years. I currently teach auto students at Sussex County Community College. Several of my students are non-traditional students. Many of my students take four other classes plus work at least one job in the area. It is not feasible, and nor would they be on time for my class, to come here at night and then try to come to philosophy, sociology, or any other classes that they would need on the campus at the college. The McGuire campus is ideal. This is brilliant. I am speaking now to the town of Newton representatives. I understand that you could, you might feel that this is a Newton versus Votech situation. It is not. But Newton is the cornerstone of the college, I mean, of the county, and leaving it to high and dry because it might be inconvenient. But many of my students last semester came from the school and were adding from your knowledge to the knowledge that we offer. This is a brilliant idea. This is about educating students, many of whom changed their major, worked their goal two to three times by the time they are 18 and 20. Thank you so much, and have a good day.
Thank you. Anyone else want to call?
Good morning. I'm Richard Kelski of Stillwood. And following is my opinion. First, I want to say I really appreciate the positive opinions regarding technical education, because at one time in my life, I earned my living as an auto mechanic. I also appreciate the passion of both sides of this argument, but I'm not here to make an argument. I'm here to bring some rationality to the scenario. We need to consider alternatives to the McGuire project and to understand the real cost of this project. This is the real world. Everybody has passions and desires, but at the end of the day, it's all about funding, cost, and functionality. We cannot proceed in this matter on short-term, bite-sized, unverified estimates of cost. We need to know the cost of this project. There has to be a plan. They have to be added up, and then they have to be compared to alternatives, many of which may be substantially less expensive for this county and the community, and quite more effective if we think it through, partnering with the Sussex County Technical School, or even at other locations. The county is a major funding source for both SCC and the technical school, so why not try to have a win-win by doing combined projects so we don't have to spend money twice? Let's also look at this from a real dollars and cents perspective. I understand the benefits from an educational perspective, but what are the projected revenues of this program? And how does that compare to a cost that at a minimum, according to the chairman and the president of the Sussex County Community College, are $4.2 million, I believe are much higher? Right now, there's only a lease on the premises. This is an opportunity. I have received some documents pursuant to an Oprah request from SCCC. The lease agreement is a one-year lease with a one-year option. I have seen no option to purchase the property, nor have I seen an agreement to purchase the property. I did see a proposed letter of intent, but it was unsigned. Right now, there's a lease. Let's take a breath, let's breathe, let's look at the matter, analyze it, and not spend money that we don't necessarily have, as we know in the state of New Jersey, and let's spend money wisely. I looked at the appraisal of the property. Everybody here should read that appraisal. It talks about comparables, but there really are no comparables. We can't evaluate the cost of this property, because the comparables are warehouses and people buying adjacent properties for a successful business, or the sale of a successful modern Hyundai dealership, not a 100-year-old building. And by the way, I read the Phase 1 report, and I read the Phase 2 proposal, and the property is riddled with environmental questions. This property is going to require such extensive renovation. One of the buildings is not even connected to the sewer system. One of the buildings is not even connected to the sewer system in Newton. No one knows what the cost of renovation of these buildings will be. So right now, we have a building here, we know what it is, we can get information on it, but why shouldn't we consider it? There are dozens of empty buildings in the county. Why shouldn't we consider them? The other thing I want to make clear is there's been a OC approval, Board of School Estimate approval, for the reallocation of some of the monies given to the college previously. I submit that that approval is null and void under 18A, 2448, which requires that each board member be given an itemized, readily understandable statement of the reallocation, which I understand from attendees at that meeting did not occur. Moreover, there are restrictions on the use of Chapter 12 funds for real estate development, and town and municipality redevelopment may be prohibited under law. Newton is a town that does need redevelopment, but Chapter 12 funds are not for that purpose. We don't want another solar project, or be forced to be spending money like we did when we bought the county administration building at a last-minute rush at a high price. Thank you for the time, and I will address the panel again later in the presentations.
Morning. My name is Chad Masorek. I'm the baking and pastry arts instructor here at Sussex Tech. I'm also the representative for Vosa Vocational Education in Sussex County. I've listened to a lot of people talk this morning, and it honestly gets my blood boiling a little bit. I'm a second-generation vocational teacher, and my father taught here for 25 years carpentry and cabinet making. And in that time, I basically grew up in this school. I knew the teachers here, and I knew a lot of the students. Brian Ward is also a member of our staff, and he was also a classmate of mine. We graduated in 1999. I can tell you honestly, from a lot of experience, that a lot of you that live out there or that are sitting here today, your house may have been built by one of our graduates. Okay? Your cars are being worked on by our graduates, who are certified in their field. Okay? I have students of mine who are up now at the Harvards of Culinary Arts, Culinary Institute of America, Johnson &amp; Wales, and who are all over this country and who are in this county, who are cooking for you, and they all started here at Sussex Tech. Okay? Our 90%, at one point, 90% of all the carp cosmetology shops in this county were owned by Sussex Tech graduates. So my message to the Freeholders is, you have a gem here, but yet you treat us like a redheaded stepchild. No offense to redheads. You treat us badly. We've been flat-funded for the past five years. Where's our funding? Now we're going to spend all this money on a community college. Why not spend it here on the youth of our education? I'm all for education. You've seen the ads and the articles in the paper on what we try to do for this county and for our school. We're putting our best foot forward. We have excellent teachers here. When my students graduate from my program, they can go into industry, or they can continue on to some of the finest schools in the country, or in the world, and they do. So why would we spend, why do we need to spend the money on a community college? I've worked for the community college. They had a viable program going there when Lisa Krauszutter was working. We had, they had a viable program going there when Lisa Krausutter was working, and then they cut it. Why did they cut it? We had plenty of students in there. Now they tried to bring it back and quite honestly, it wasn't very good. And I was one of the ones teaching. Chef Tripper was the other one who was teaching a program that had two students in it. I don't mind helping. I want to see the education. I want to see these kids go on. Okay? But we need money here. Our, our, our equipment is antiquated, our shops are too small, we're the only school in the county in which our enrollment is growing, but yet we're not getting the help. Why is that? Can you answer that question for me? Okay? You know, like I said, I've been here for a long time. This is my 13th year teaching. I'm involved in every part of this. We went down last year to Atlantic City. We put our best foot forward for the freeholders. We took golds in a couple of the competitions that we were in. Our kids, they, they, they participate in Skills USA. Okay? Bring home gold medals, bring home silvers in the, in the industries that they're being trained in. All of our kids, a lot of our kids leave with certifications, national certifications. From my cluster, they were leaving with SERVCE. Auto mechanics are ASE certified. Cosmetologists are licensed cosmetologists. By the way, which has been 100%, almost practically 100% since I've been here. So we need the money here at Sussex Tech, okay? And it needs to be spent on us. Where do we get the money? How about we start charging these companies and businesses that are making millions of dollars off of our citizens in this county? Walmart, ShopRite, McDonald's. Start taking more taxes from them. Why take it from the people who are living here, busting their humps? Instead of sending their kids to a local community college, maybe they can send them to a larger college. And I'm not bashing the college. Listen, it's not for everybody to go to a big college. Sometimes they like that hometown feeling. But there's no reason to build another area or another school and give all this fresh new equipment when we can do it here. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Seeing now in public like a motion to close the meeting to the public, return to regular business. Second, I'm Tilla. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed, the ayes and the noes, close to the public. Now we're on to citing of career and technical education within Sussex County. John Connolly, you want to get off?
What we'd like to do is we have a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation that we'd like to give, try to sort of structure to the presentation. Ambo, I'll play quite a bit of the unit, so we would like to be able to do that. Judge Parker and I are prepared to begin.
Okay. Are we going to break the screen now?
Yeah, I guess, I guess the idea-
So we're going to go out there?
Yeah, what we've been told is that folks go there and we stay up here and the screen comes down.
Okay.
It is not a laser-like show, but-
Almost is, yeah.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, there has been such difficulty with the sound system. I have a cordial voice, so I think I can be heard. Can I be heard all the way in the back?
Yes.
Great. If you can't hear me, tug on your ear or wave in the air. The sound system has really been very inadequate, please, having, I've had a difficult time hearing up here and hearing generally. We have a presentation this morning. We've broken it down into five parts. Going to start with, why a college degree? We're going to address the issue of this distinction between the high school programs and the college programs. And the chef who was here, is he still here? Okay, I'm sorry he's not here because he is absolutely right about what we talked about, about what is produced here. And I'm going to refer to it as the VOTEC because I'm a longtime Sussex County resident and that's what I've known it as all these years. And I hope Gus, where's Gus? Gus is not offended when I call it VOTEC instead of the tech school. But I think we all know what we're talking about. We're going to talk first about that issue, then we're going to talk about how did we get here? And that's a question posed to us by a VOTEC board member recently, and we think that's a question that really ought to be answered. Then we're going to talk about where we're going. Then we're going to talk about why the McGuire site. And the last point we have is finances, and we're going to address that. So let's start with, why a college degree? College versus high school. And I'm going to start with an observation that I have made just in hearing the questions over and over again about the difference between the high school and the college programs. When I was in elementary school, I took English and math and science. Every year that I was in elementary school. When I was in high school, I took English and math and science. And when I went to college, I took English, math, and science. Was it the same thing over and over? Of course not. I learned how to add and multiply and divide in elementary school. I had geometry and algebra and calculus in college, in high school rather. When I got to college calculus, it convinced me that I wanted to be a liberal arts student, not a, not a science or math student. But nevertheless, the, all of you have been through these experiences. You know that an elementary school math, English, science program is not a high school program, nor is the high school program a college program. So think about that as we go through this. I'm going to ask Jason Food, who is our director of our technical programs in the automotive and in the welding area. Jason is going to talk to us about the distinction between the high school programs and the college program. But before he begins, I just want to say one other thing here. I give congratulations to Gus Mowba and what he has done here at VOTEC. He has taken a school that was generally considered a last-resort school and made it such a demand school that there is a waiting list and there are people who are champion of the bid to get in. That deserves all of the attention that it should get. And what he has done here does not take away anything from what we're trying to do. It complements it. We want to work with VOTEC. We want to partner with them in programs, in where we go from here. We've already been talking about these issues. But I, I think it's important that everybody recognizes what the VOTEC has done over the past few years. The chef was absolutely right. The graduates of this, of this institution deserve the jobs that they get. We want to give them the opportunity to go next steps. Okay, Jason?
Okay, um, I spent my night last night. Can everyone hear me?
No.
No? I guess I woke up. That might be too loud. Now, is that better? Yes? So I spent my night last night trying to figure out how to really describe the difference between the high school and the college. So what I decided actually is I'm not going to do that. I love the points that were made. What I really think we need to think about is stop looking at it as versus. That's what I see a lot of. College versus the high school, high school versus the college. Okay? I think all technical high schools do an amazing job. Right off the bat. You deal with young men and women unsure what route they want to take. I'm a junior, maybe I want to do this trade, maybe I want to study this. Pressure from the parents, they get into that senior year, I'm not really too sure. So at the high school level, there are a lot to take off. Again, I think Sussex Tech does a phenomenal job. It has a great trade program and there's been good feedback from industry partners about how they laid that foundation. Now, a student might transition to us. Excuse me. So in our two-year programs, I want, I want us to take a look at it as if we're trying to build a home. So that high school education they gave here at the tech high school is that foundation. Then we go into that first year of our trade programs. So yes, we are competing in some of those topics. We're talking about engines, electrical, some basic culinary, building construction techniques, things of that sort. Now at the college level, we don't have those boundaries. We're a lot more flexible. So we get, as we get into that second year, we're able to really construct and operate where you can on a high school level. Our students are older, so we can integrate them more into dealerships, start building those partnerships, start dealing with those internships as well. Also, our staff, our programs are staffed by adjuncts. All our adjuncts are masters of their craft, master on the national level, master on their brand. They wake up 5:00 o'clock in the morning, they make that long drive to work, they're working online as master-level technicians. They finish up their workday and then they come and construct at night. So our students now at the county college levels are being taught by industry professionals what really is going on. So at the high school level, we might talk about tires. Yes, they're round, yes, they're on a car. Here's some basic stats where we need to look for. Now, with instruction of current industry professionals, we can take that to the next level. Industry requires, hey, look, it's not just this, it's also this. That's going to allow them to be a lot more successful. We're going to go from getting a job to working towards that long-term career.
Thank you. We have a few slides that we want you to go through. Cory, is the clicker working? There we go. Okay. Going to talk about the funding for the county college. One of the things that it's important to appreciate here is that we are not competing with VOTEC for capital improvement funds. Our capital improvement funds come from a state statute that designates those funds solely for community college capital improvements. It's not something that could be used for the VOTEC, nor is it something that we can use for operating expenses. They are designated only for capital improvements. And the, and the fact of the matter is, we have bonding, we have already bonded all of the money that we need to buy and to develop the McGuire project right now. Those bonds have already been sold. Now someone mentioned, give the money back to the taxpayers. That would be great. However, the money doesn't belong to the taxpayers. It belongs to the bondholders. So it's the bondholders who are supporting this project at this point. And the important thing to remember about this is that when we talk about operating expenses, we are talking about contributions from the state and from the county. At the present time, we take 3.6% of the county budget. We have heard over and over again, the college takes too much of the county budget. 3.6% is what we cost county. And I would stake my life on the fact that it's one of the best investments the county can make. Now the county appropriation for this year fiscal year 18 is $4,200,000, uh, $20,000, I'm sorry, reading that wrong, $20,000. Now that's a lot of money by any standard. I'm not diminishing it, I'm not minimizing it. What I'm saying is, it is a very sound investment. And in that investment, you are going to get your money's worth many times over in the county because of all of the other reasons that we're going to go through here. What have we got there? This is the economic contribution to the county. It's really important for people to appreciate not what we take from the county, but what we bring to the county. Now these charts represent the difference between people who have, do I have the right slide? Yeah, the average earnings, yeah, this is what we're talking about. When people graduate from the community college, now I'm not diminishing graduates from the high school at all, and they go out and they get jobs. But the fact of life is, when they leave a college with a college degree, they have greater earnings capacity. And we show here that when they have less than high school or high school or social degrees or bachelor's degrees, the distinction in their earnings. So what does that mean for the county and for the towns that they live in? It means taxable income. It means that it broadens the tax base all the way around. So we bring to the county substantial amounts of money in terms of the increased earnings that our graduates make. It brings to the county increased earnings from the people who work at the college. And it brings to the county, in addition to the gross product of the county, by people who stay here in the county. And our graduates, by a recent economic study that was done in 2016, 85% of our graduates stay here in Sussex County. Isn't that what we want? Isn't that what we want to do to stop life from the county? And we're not talking about rehabilitating towns. We're talking about educating people to stay here in the county. Okay. From the student perspective, we want to talk about, it's hard for me to read this upside down. It's hard for me to read, but nevertheless, I know what it says. From the student perspective, you can see it now, from the taxpayers' perspective, from the social perspective, you can see the benefits that the college brings to the county. It's really important for us to appreciate that. Without the college here in Sussex County, the community college, our potential community college students would be going to Mars, to other places, down to Patterson. But no, they're staying here. And when they stay here, they stay here. They live here. They raise their families here, they work here, then they own businesses here. Now the chef pointed out to us that the VOTEC graduates, that they also stay here and that they own businesses here. And that's great. And what we're going to give them, the opportunity, if they choose to take it, is to go to the next step, to give them, in addition to the classes that they would get in the various trades that they're going to look at. They're going to get classes in business, in marketing, in management. They're going to get gen ed, general education classes, so that they improve their lives as they go along, so that they can move up to management positions. They can own their own businesses as well. Okay. Academic programs. This is a quick rundown of what the college does in general. We don't want you to forget that we are an academic institution. This is not a vocational institution. It's an academic institution. And you can see there the number of programs we have, certificates of achievement, the new programs, those are the McGuire programs. Culinary Institute, Diesel, Machine Tool Technology, Welding. These are the new programs. Okay. Then we have the tuition fees. I'm going to run through this quickly. It just shows you how much money people save by coming to the community college and then if they choose to go on to a four-year college. And I'm going to go through it quickly because that's not the main topic here today. We just want to bring that to your attention, what we provide. You just can give a quick rundown. If you look at the right-hand column here, look at the difference with somebody who starts at, at the school. With somebody who starts at the community college and then goes on to four years. Somebody who goes to private school. Look at the difference. Look at how much money a family can save. Okay. Why a college-level technical education program? Jason spoke to that for some fifth. I'm going to ask John Connolly if he would expand on that.
Sure, sure. The workforce today is really changing. Take a look at what it used to be. This represents where we are and where we're going. The increase of robotics, I had conversation with folks out in industry, they know it's a better, two most significant technological trends that we're facing right now is in drones and the robotics that are behind those things, and then of course, computerized technology, informatics, and security. This is the big stuff. This is where it's at and where it's going. Requires a particular level of skill. That, that is an undeniable reality, and it's a geometric level of change.
level of change. Take a look at some of the differences, because there are differences that Judge Parker has already referenced. Differences between what happens at the foundational, critically important foundational level at places like Sussex Tech School. And also, let's not forget what happens with the robotics program at Noon High School, what's happening in Vernon. These are all high school students receiving this kind of foundational education. The vocation-oriented, STEM-oriented, um, technical-oriented education is not just happening here, it's happening at the high school level, all throughout the county. The mission of this entity at Sussex Technical School is very, very focused, they have things like Skills USA, a very, very powerful program for the students here. So the differences are real, but the similarities must not be forgotten. Sussex County Community College, it really is the next level. And so we talk about some of the things that are important when we consider that. College programs that we have. When we talk about some of the needs of employers, right, it's that the training, the advanced skill sets that meet the specific needs of employers. We are able to do that in different ways than when it happens at the high school level. Different in what way? It is because our adjunct faculty members are actually practitioners. Jason made reference to that before. They're experts in their fields, not the expertise of the high school is not also equal. They're active practitioners. It's what's happening in the field right now, are fully engaged in that. That has a double benefit. It means that they have relationships and networking connections in industry right now, that serves as an entree for our students right then and there. And they're over eighteen years of age, for the most part. Because they're over eighteen years of age, those apprenticeships and internships can be much richer than what can happen if they are actually marketers. The flexibility of a college program. Judge Parker made reference recently to the fact that this is an academic institution, and we are. We're an institution of higher education. And because we're an institution of higher education, our accreditation is different. We are accredited by the Middle States Commission on Higher Education. There are particular standards that we need to follow, completely different than what occurs in high school. But because of that, our faculty have a great deal of academic freedom to maneuver. Academic freedom is one of those concepts we sort of talk around and about, but it becomes manifest in very real ways at a college that honors that. I can tell you that when I go to the meetings that Gus and I sometimes share, the superintendent's roundtable, very, very sobering for me, the challenge that the superintendents and the principals have to face. The strictures that are placed upon them limit freedom of movement, freedom of flexibility to be able to expand what they are doing. And we don't have that particular power. And so, the richness of the collaboration that happens at all the high schools and the community colleges is essential by the flexibility that we can have, the things that we can do in a more entrepreneurial way. It is true that the high school has a tempo about it. That tempo of class can sometimes interfere with long, uninterrupted, concentrated time to become expert at what's happening. College, we can say, whoa, this is how we'd like to do it, and there's no one there to stop us or prevent us from doing it. And so we do it as best for the training environment and the learning environment for the students. Yeah, and the academic freedom, that was a very good point. Critically important difference that occurs. The high school environment, the heterogeneity of the students is dictated by the age of the class. In the community college, there are students of different age, different experience, different background, they come together in one place that is not duplicated in the high school. This person in the community college could be just as likely a student as an instructor. And that matters. Why? Because, and there's only one other person who will know this name, his name's John Sakina. He's a diesel instructor. And I asked him one time, how is it going this semester with the students? And he said, this is a great, great place. And I said, John, what's the difference? What's the difference? You know, as an instructor, taught at the college level for ten years, and I'll tell you, it's as true as anything, Deb Henneken can speak to that if she's still here, that every class seems to be different. What is it? Why is that? How come, as a coach, the team isn't always the same, you sort of do a plug-and-play? I know what my curriculum is, I do a plug-and-play, eh, it doesn't happen that way. So John Sakina, what's the difference? The difference is leadership in the class, not leadership that comes from me. Those of you who've gone to college know that experience, you go to the class, and the class is more than the professor. It's the people that you're with, it's your study pals, it's who raises their hand, who dominates the conversation, who rebutts that inside of the classroom. That concoction matters. Of course, it matters in high school, it matters as well, but it's diverse in ways that are not possible in the high school. Veterans in particular add a dynamic that changes everything. And so, when we are talking about this leadership inside of the cohort, instructor is not the only leader, and that makes a huge difference in the community college domain. We also know that when we talk about this, that the degrees are going to matter, they talked about that a little bit more. But our students are able to interact with business community leaders in a different way than they can when they're in the high school, they basically have a lot more access out there. The internships, the apprenticeships really look very different. College degree piece of this. This is important, not just in and of itself, but also for our partnership with the high schools and Sussex Tech. We know that the college degree is one of the most important things. Judge Parker made reference to a previous slide before, it talks about this, some of this is monetary difference. We know as a matter of fact that fifty-six percent, um, greater earnings for folks who have a college degree versus those who have only a high school degree. We also know that if we lift the high school graduate, they are less likely to own a home if they're just a high school graduate, they're less likely to have a job if they're just a high school graduate, and they're less likely to contribute. That's not just about the skills, it's about the degree, because the opportunities for things close out if you do not have a college degree.
John, if I can just reference this New York Times article, just last Friday, September fourteenth, there was an article in the New York Times. The title of the article is, "Even in Better Times, Some Americans Seem Farther Behind." Here's why. And the article goes on to state, and I'm quoting here, "As new research illustrates, two groups in particular have stalled, whites without a college degree and blacks and Hispanics with one. Both are being far outpaced by college-educated whites." The article goes on to say, and this is quoting from the Census Bureau report, uh, the statistics that are cited in here. "An advanced global economy has rapidly revalued contributions of blue-collar-labeled labor and technical skills. The lingering economic insecurity has fired resentments, sharpened identity politics, and fueled populism on the right and the left. The most striking result of the study was the steep declines among white families headed by someone without a college degree. Members of this group, labeled the white working class, were not only left behind financially, but also lagged in other measures of well-being, like self-reported health, homeownership, marriage, and cohabitation rates."
So Judge Parker, the research that Judge Parker is referring to is this research done by the Federal Reserve Bank of St. Louis. Here's the most pertinent data that Judge Parker just made reference to. We take a look at the median income relative to the population median for college graduate families. This is the hundred percent mark. That's the median of the country. You get a college degree, you're above it, period. Of course, we have the ethnic component of this as well, it's a dynamic that matters, but not at the top of it today. This is what happens when you do not. This is a population base, but on a population base, even the skills conversation, even the skills point is smoothed out. It really is about the degree. And everybody is falling below the median here, right? And in this particular case, whites have dropped off more than others. So the college degree matters, we've had considerable discussion in our board of trustees about the nature of the college degree and how important that is for employers. And we talk about the skills, and we know that they're critical. If you've got a degree and no skill, you're gone, okay? But if you've got the skill and you don't have the degree, you're not going to last the long haul. And that's a critically important thing. The chef who spoke here today, again, exactly what, we're in the education business, the community college, we are in the education business, but we do keep our mission as community engagement and economic development. That is, to be clear, that is part of our mission. However, this point about the education piece is positively critical. If we don't think about the long haul and the long term for our students, we're doing them a disservice. And so the degree matters now. Again, this is just more of the same kind of overwhelming data, they all point in the same direction. It's a close shave if you've got a high school degree, essentially, the amount that the government spends on you, the amount that you pay in, you pay in a little bit more. If you've got a college degree, this is how much the government spends on you, and this is how much you put into the degree. This is an overwhelming statistic from that standpoint. So, specific career and technical programs that we have to offer, going on a long way, and I understand that, you've got a point to make, but I'm going to go through these programs. The Culinary Institute, as you folks probably heard, or will hear right now, the Culinary Institute model is critical to what we're trying to do. We're not offering just a culinary program, culinary skills, learning how to cook. It's not just about that. It's learning how to do the back of the house, it's about how to do the front of the house. Doing this in a real environment, actually, they are running the business before we, they're doing the inventory and all the rest of it. And again, because it's a mixed cohort of folks of different ages, we've got folks who will be thirty-two years old, with business experience already, and they're going to be teaching the eighteen-year-olds who've already been here at Sussex Tech, who don't feel ready to be out in the work world, or want to have a continued experience, to sharpen their skills some more. Here are the employers who are directly or indirectly asking for us to be doing this. It's a lot. So John, I've been having conversations with all these folks. Two-thirds in this case? It's not a particularly equivocal point. Diesel technology, this one, our primary partners here will be Campbell Supply Company, they have come to us and said, you've got to do something to help us out. We are expanding, we need diesel technicians, we cannot generate them, what can we do? How can we help? How can we help? How can we help? I've had three telephone calls from them just in this last, when are you going to get going? Customer hire program, when are you going to be set up? It's sort of an overwhelming thing, I wish I could say it was done yesterday. Machine tool, Collinear Labs, they're the ones that most engage with us. I'll say that there are also folks, frankly, in Passaic County and in Warren County, they own a piece of what we're doing. Other community colleges are not satisfying their needs. When we speak with them, when Jason speaks with them, or I speak with them, we speak their language. Others that just kind of don't understand entirely, and they don't speak the language. A new member of our board, Jim Wollman, incredibly helpful in that regard, assisting us with this. But let us be clear about Collinar Labs. They feel so strongly about this, that they are committing almost half a million dollars to begin to get this done, down in the center of the region. Alex Cable, very clear about it, he does not want this project, you know, he does not want to be involved in this project, really, if it's not a downwind. It does not help his total initiative.
Are we ready to move on to how to get here?
One last question. Twelve, Cory? You back there? Just kind of advances. Okay. We are going to show you this. Cory, before you do, stop it. Pause. Yes. Just stop the pause. It's four minutes late, we've got a point here. Where's Jason? Back to the video. What is happening in technology as a result of robotics and STEM and engineering is changing absolutely everything. That is not a computer simulation. That is real, that is now, that is in prototype. It is going to change everything, and it's happening in every industry. The pace of change that's happening is positively dizzying. You have to have academic programs to develop the workers who are going to support this kind of transportation, this kind of technology, security. The number-one thing right now, one billion dollars, we can sort of advance thinking about, is espionage, drone-based espionage. And the countermeasures, right now, right there, one billion dollars is being spent by corporations in corporate counter-espionage against drones. It's positively dizzying. And this requires college degrees, and it requires advanced training, and you've got to be flexible, you've got to be fast to keep going.
Okay. We were asked, John sitting over here, he asked us, how did we get here? How did we get to the college doing vocational education? But we want to distinguish, it's not vocational education, just like the VOTEC was really not the VOTEC anymore. The VOTEC is the technical high school, and there's a good reason for that, even though some old folks like me still call it the VOTEC. The fact of the matter is, in this stage of the game, we have a member of our board who's an executive with UPS. UPS has thousands and thousands of employees, hundreds of thousands of employees globally, yeah. And he points out to us, every employee has a device. You go into a supermarket today, every employee has a device. The shelf stocking is done with scanners, so that it goes into their inventory. The checkout counts are all done with scanners. Everybody has a device today. The UPS delivery people have devices. Everybody who's loading the trucks has a device. So everywhere we go, we need to have the kind of technical education, not just VOTEC, but technical education. And here we, I'm going to get to the, but I wanted to get to John's question, how did we get here? We got here because when John Connolly came to Sussex County Community College three years ago, uh, he started an employer's roundtable. He got the big employers together. Atlantic Health, so was Joe DiPaolo, Thor Labs. Atlantic Health, so it was Joe Pallo, Thor Labs, so it was Alex Cable, High Point Solutions, Greg Murphy from Selective. Was Crystal Springs involved at that time? Yes, Crystal Springs was involved at that time as well. Sat around with these folks and started to get them to think about, what do they need to have an educated workforce here in Sussex County? And one of the first things they all told John was that they can hire educated workpeople, but they come from Mars, and they come from Passaic, and they come from down the line. And what happens? After a winter of commuting, they don't want to stay here anymore. They want to go down the line where they don't have to come up Route 80 and Route 15. And having commuted on Route 80 for many years myself, I don't blame them. But the fact of the matter is, they wanted an educated workforce here in Sussex County, people that they could hire and who would stay here. And that was the genesis for us starting to think about, how do we get into educating our students beyond just getting onto the next four-year college? So we are not just focusing any longer on the two-year degree that automatically transfers to a four-year college. The point is to provide people with skills and opportunities here in the county, and is what the county employers are telling us they need. And that's how we got here. We have changing demands in the workplace, we have employers who tell us, every employee has a device, and we need to have them trained, that although we train them when they get here, they need to have basics, they need to have understanding. And the employer's roundtable has been a very significant part of what we have done here. Do you want to just add to that for a bit?
Um, I can't.
Okay, great. Then, we had a meeting the other day, and Jason was at that meeting. And John Conley was talking about these new programs. And he made a statement, and I thought I heard him say, "We're turning, training blue-collar workers." And I turned to him and I said, "No, no. People don't go to college for blue-collar trades." And he said, "No, you didn't hear me correctly. I said, 'new collar.'" And then Jason, who was sitting on the other side of the table from me, responded.
I actually laughed, and I smiled.
Not to laugh.
The, I think, has anyone actually heard this phrase yet? It was published by IBM not too long ago, like the past week. I love this phrase, "new collar." I've been in trade almost twenty years. I got my master's status in the national level within the brand I work for, at a high-line luxury car dealership. And I never owned a suit. I owned one suit. My entire career, I always wore a uniform. Guys, just keep that in mind. Going back to what we talked about between high school transitioning into that college, into that college level, you think about kind of the shirts we wear, right? We start at the high school level, you know, probably wearing a T-shirt from the shop, maybe we're wearing a long-sleeve shirt. You get into that first tier at that community college level, we start to reinforce what we were taught at that high school level, we add those little extras. Now comes that white collar, I'm sorry, that new collar level. That's your second year at the school. That's that lab coat that you put on. You learn those higher-level skills, those computer-based skills, those more advanced technical schools. So we go from that T-shirt, from being in that shop with those work boots on and those pants, thinking about a job, up to that second level, that second tier of that. Very specific, very demanding, technical style of work that helps build us towards being here.
And you've got your new collar.
Yeah, it's great. Now we have our new collars.
Okay. But it was, it brought home to me the significant difference of what we're talking about here. We're not talking about blue-collar trades. We're talking about trading people. When they come through our automotive program, they're going to get business and marketing and management. They're going to get gen ed skills. So they're going to get more than just a trade. And they get that in high school, just like I had English and Science and Math in high school, but it goes on to the next level. Okay, now we're going to move on now to the McGuire site. We're running a little bit longer than we want to here, and we're going to include it up. Okay, the benefits of downtown Newton. First of all, I wish that every one of you had the opportunity to come and see the McGuire site. We have taken a number of people through, some of the town council people have been through, some of the freeholders have been through, and certainly all of our board members who had the opportunity, if they had took the time and came through the program. We have been offering to give tours to anybody who wanted. We wanted you to see why this particular site is so well-suited for what we want to do there. The site already has it set up for automotive. The site has a perfect, in the front, where the old showroom used to be, it is the perfect restaurant with teaching kitchens. We have our chef here, Martin Kester back there. Martin is designing the kitchens. And for anybody who thinks that it's going to take us a year, two years, or three years to get going, we are going. Martin is teaching his basic culinary classes out of Camp Nogita in their kitchens because they only use them during the summer. Jason's already teaching his automotive programs. The machine tool is running down in Thor Labs facility down on 206, but they can't leave us there because they need the space. By next year, we'll have all of those programs on the McGuire site if we move forward with this project. And we have the opportunity... People say, "Well, we're not in the business of rehabilitating downtown Newton." No, not necessarily in that business. That's going to be a great side of Newton. That's what it's going to be. It is going to lift Newton, and it's going to lift the county. And how important can that be to everybody? When we talk about lifting the tax base, broadening the ability of people to make greater incomes, own better businesses, and stay here, deploy in the businesses that we have here? We have a lot of businesses here in Sussex County. Some of us don't even realize it. Can we get on to that? Okay. Oh, and also, we want to talk about, there are numbers of... People have said, "Oh, well, nobody ever does this." Well, I've got an interesting question. Northampton Community College, which has a campus right across the River Campus in Pennsylvania, in the town of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, they took over the old Bethlehem Steel facility, and they renovated that. And they have a community college in there. They have a whole medical staff facility in there. They have student housing in there. So today, instead of looking like a derelict steel factory, this is what it looks like. We have, that's again, Northampton. I'm going to go through these a little quicker. Then we have South Pea Mont College, same thing. Took over some old factory buildings. These are the old buildings they took, and that's what it's looking like today. So that's the improvement that came along, not because they were trying to rehabilitate downtown, but because they were trying to build a first-class educational facility for their students. Yeah, this is still Pea Mont. Look at what the town looks like. This is Swatmore. Now Swatmore built an inn in the downtown area in Pennsylvania where they live. And that inn is their whole hospitality program. It's hotel management, it's culinary, the whole kit and caboodle that it takes to run an inn. And they have brought that area up. Over here, we have, it's still Swatmore. Here it shows you what they've done in there, the kind of housing that they're providing. Then we have, it's still Swatmore. I'm going to move on quickly here. Colby, this is up in Maine, Waterbury, Maine. Waterbury, Maine was a very dying town. They took over old factory buildings in downtown. And John can speak to Colby firsthand experience. Want to mention anything there?
Oh, this particular project, the only thing that I would say is that in Waterville, Maine, there are five economic development entities, all working in competition with each other to try to figure out what to do to help downtown Waterville. Very similar problems to what we experienced in Newton, slightly larger town. Fact of the matter is that Colby College had assets to be able to deal with. And it was not until they, out of their own self-interest, who advanced their own initiatives, said, "This is what we'd like to do downtown." And Waterville accepted that offer. All five of those economic development entities came together around this one initiative that Colby, in their self-interest, wished to execute on. And I'm telling you, it's changing downtown Waterville from about...
Okay, yes, another shot of Colby, and we're going to move on here. Rowan. This is down in Glassboro, New Jersey. Now Rowan, Rowan, boy, we would all envy Rowan. Rowan has millions and millions of dollars in endowment money. If we had the millions and billions of dollars in endowment money, this is what we would be building. Not just the McGuire site. This would be what we'd be doing in downtown Newton. But the fact of the matter is, again, it was a dying town because the college went into downtown. It stepped off its campus and went into downtown. They were able to bring that town up and make it, well, they're calling it a quintessential college town, college town. But Newton is a quintessential college town. Okay, there's more on Rowan. We can, anybody who wants more information on this, we have it, I'm going to flip through. The McGuire campus. You've seen these pictures in the newspaper, I'm sure some of you have the handouts that we had today. This is our architects rendering them, what it can look like. We have the restaurant right in front. We're going to have a park area. A park area. People say, "Well, why do we need a park area?" Well, first of all, it's going to make the campus more enhanced. Our students are going to have a place to sit and to work, to study, and to socialize. Then there's going to be the cafe, which is going to be open to the whole community. Then back there, there's going to be the automotive and the welding program and the machine tool program. Now, as most of you know who are familiar with that property, there's a huge parking lot that goes, I say to the south because it's 206 South, you go down 206 South. There's a great big parking lot. "Oh, what are you going to do with that parking lot? Are you going to cut it off so that people in Newton can't use it?" Not at all. It is our plan and intention to work with you, to partner with you in developing that old site. This makes it a more habitable and tenable place, so that when you come into Newton, you don't think of a derelict town, you don't think of the town that doesn't have any stores on Spring Street. You think about what the potential is, what can happen there. We anticipate having three hundred students on this campus for these programs when we build it out. Now, there was a very nice lady here who talked about, "Well, why just build it in Newton? It's only a mile away." Well, it's not even a mile away. It is less than a mile away. If you wanted to walk and have the energy, it's about a half mile. But the fact of the matter is, there are several reasons why here in Newton, rather than here on Route 94, or up in Vernon, or in the other sites that we looked at, in Freedom, in Lafayette, the fact of the matter is, the students go from here to their other classes. How long is it going to take them to get there? How are they going to get there? They don't have immediate personal transportation. So that is a very significant factor. In addition to which, we would have to have separate administration if we had a campus farther away. Now that leverages our operating list, which makes a significant difference to us over succeeding years. We don't have to have a special supervisor or a special dean on the campus. What we will have are the instructors, the supervisors and directors like Jason and like Martin, and they will be there supervising them, three minutes away from our campus on the hill. The other aspect, the lady mentioned, the people from Vernon, we have satellite campuses in Vernon and Oaxaca. We are trying to reach out to the community in every way that we can. Okay. This is a rough, very rough. We haven't actually set the plans yet, but this is, you see here, restaurants up front. There are actually going to be two kitchens. There's a teaching kitchen and a working kitchen. Martin is working on the designs for those now. It's going to have, the working kitchen will be visible from the restaurant, so you'll see the students working. This is a rough idea of what we'd like it to look like. That's it? Okay. Okay. Okay, very good. All right, now, from here, we just want to go on to a couple of other things about what we're doing here. We are partnering with Newton. We are in the process of doing an economic impact study. People could say, "Well, how do you build it and they will come? Is that the dream?" No, that's not the dream. And the other thing, by the way, you ought to know is, these classes are already filled. Jason's classes are filled. The culinary class is filled out in Camp Nogita, where they're doing their chopping and dicing and slicing. These classes are filled. They are already going. These are not classes that are going to take a year, two years, three years to fill up. We're doing it. We're doing it now. And we have these opportunities now. It's not tomorrow, not next year, now. We also have been talking with a developer in Newton. He has some suggestions to use our site. He has terrific ideas. Nothing's in concrete, nothing's in stone. But we talk about what the potential is for that site down the line. Now, I'm going to mention about the money that's been donated. We've been talking about seven hundred thousand. Well, yesterday, we did an accounting on it. We have nine hundred and forty thousand dollars in pledges, of which we have three hundred ninety thousand dollars in hand. That's money donated by businesses in the county who want this to go forward. They want to help Newton recover, but they want the college to be able to move forward on that McGuire site. John mentioned previously, Alex Cable. Now, he has a self-interest, of course he has. He has the other end of town. He wants to develop it so that his employees have a town that they can be proud of and that they can enjoy, that there'll be restaurants on Spring Street. There's housing on Spring Street. We know that there are housing developments in the works on Spring Street. We know that if, it's not if you build it, they will come. It's we know, they're here, let's build it for you. So the idea, I've lived in Sussex County for forty-eight years, and I've been in public life for almost twelve. I have never seen excitement from the community like this. And when have any of you ever heard of businesses coming forward with almost a million dollars, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars in pledges, without even a campaign? We didn't even have a capital campaign. They came to us and said, "We want this built. We need these facilities." So that takes me into the finances. Now, we have had requests and effective head demands for financial information. We have the financial information. We have, however, a significant concern, and we have been advised by legal counsel to be very cautious in disclosing our finances. We have a presentation prepared for the freeholders, and we would like to set up a meeting, hopefully within the next week, to sit down with the freeholders and fully discuss our finances. Now, why, we say, are you not disclosing this to the public now? Well, there are a couple of very good reasons. Number one, we have given rough outlines. We have given the fact that we are going to pay two million dollars net for the campus, and that our estimates from our architects and engineers is that it's going to be roughly four hundred, four point five million dollars to renovate that site completely, to the extent that we will have our three hundred students in there and be able to do all of the programs we've talked about. Okay, why don't we want to make this public right now? Because if we're going out to bid and we're negotiating contracts, do you want to let the contractor know how much money you have in your pocket? Because you know what's going to happen. The competitive bidding process will be skewed. The negotiations are not going to be as straightforward as they should be. And we want to be able to get the best economic position for the college and for the county. But we have the finances, we have them very clearly laid out, we want to meet with the freeholders, we would like to do it sooner rather than later, within the next week if we can set up that meeting. We've tried to set up numerous meetings in the past without success. But we are seriously inviting you, A, to come and visit the McGuire site and see what we're talking about, and B, to sit down and talk with us about the money. We have the money. The bonds have been sold, the money is there. It can't go back to the taxpayers because it belongs to the bondholders. It's, it seems silly for people to say, "Well, it can't go back to the taxpayer." The tax, yes, but the taxpayers are amortizing it over many years. And think about it this way, the longer that money sits there unused, the more interest we're paying on it every year. If you have a twenty-year mortgage, it's going to cost you X amount of dollars. You have a forty-year mortgage, it's going to cost you that much more because you're using the money over a longer period of time. The sooner we pay off these bonds, the less it's going to cost in the long run. So in the long run, we're ready to start right now. I mean, the short run, I have it, we're ready to start right now. In the long run, the project has already been funded. So with that, we're going to close out this portion and send it back to who's ever going to set up the next portion. I really thank you for your attention. I appreciate the time that you've spent listening to us. Uh, I appreciate, um, the time that you've spent listening to us. Can we just give me one more second? Uh, the 4.2 million includes the $2 million purchase price. It's not 2 million plus 4.2 million. I apologize, I shouldn't say that clearly.
All right, we did not adjourn or anything, so we're, we're back to our, to the meeting here.
As a matter of procedure, Director Rose, um, we expect another councilperson and will not have a form or a, a, a conflict that we need to, um, leave for now. So, for the town of Newton, we're going to formally adjourn our portion of the agenda. However, our town manager, our planner, legal counsel, our clerk, Deputy Mayor Flynn and Councilman Dixon are here for, uh, any questions and, uh, for the duration of meeting. So, uh, Councilwoman Flynn, a motion to adjourn, uh, at 11:05.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Flynn and a second by Councilman Dixon to adjourn the Newton, um, council meeting, uh, joint council special meeting today at 11:05.
Deputy Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Flynn?
Yes.
Mayor Wack?
Yes.
Thank you for your time. Okay, so, we've heard the, uh, the presentation from SCCC, and now I'd just like to throw it out here, let's, uh, let's get a discussion going and have questions, if any of us have questions.
I'd like to speak first on behalf of Sussex Tech before we continue with that, um, discussion. As superintendent of Sussex Tech and the principal, I have a role here that's vital to advocate for our school. We also have a mission to work very closely with the community college.
Gus, if you stand up immediately.
Thank you. Um, let's get, as superintendent and principal here at Sussex Tech, now I have a requirement to, and obligation to advocate for our high school, and also work as a partner with the college. And I, we, we and my staff, um, we really want to be a partner with the college because we know it's vital to the county to promote career technical education. It's vital to my students to have them excel after high school. Many of them go over to the college here in the county, and we want to keep that partnership. And in front of me, there's an articulation agreement that my staff and Dr. Conley's staff were very hard on the last 18 months in the area of cosmetology. We're hoping to sign that this afternoon after this meeting, which will allow my cosmetology students the opportunity to graduate from Sussex Tech and have the college recognize my two experts in the field of cosmetology, my two teachers are experts also, that my students are coming out with state certification, that the credits that they would have earned in the college program for the cosmetology are, are granted to them because they passed the state licensing exam. We want them to continue at the college, get those business courses, but they could do that while they're in high school. We have a very strong concurrent program here at Sussex Tech that our guidance staff has developed over the years, led by Mrs. Kiper, our guidance director. That allows my students to take concurrent English, biology, and other courses, they can pay for the credit and graduate Sussex Tech with college credits. So, earlier, um, the description of a high school student as maybe a reason why not to come to this campus to build on and bring to college, and I understand where the college is coming from, and that's their mission to go to McGuire, I'm just saying that, don't let the representation of the high school student that was portrayed earlier, that's not a Sussex Tech graduate. My teachers, and this is, this is not about us first of the college, there is, there is so much misinformation about who Sussex Tech is. I recommend that, starting tomorrow, there should be a joint committee of my board members, my staff, the college's board members and the college staff, that we work closer together so we could know more about the college and they can know more about us, so that we could build that strong partnership. What we need to do, and I want to help the college, we need to find the students that didn't come here. We turn away students because we can't accommodate them all. Those are the 18-year-olds, up to 30-year-olds that Dr. Lamont, he told us a story earlier about, who didn't have a chance to go to vocational high school in New Jersey, but they want to become involved in the trades. Those are the people that that presentation is targeting, not my students. Back there are not my entire staff, they are experts. I have an engineering teacher, I have an electronics teacher, I have a, um, electrical teacher who just came out of industry last year. He gave up his career in industry to come here and teach. He's our track coach, he's a graduate, he's outstanding. I have a welding teacher back there, a carpentry teacher, automotive teacher, two of them, agriculture. They are experts. They, I learn from them every day. They are in the field, our night school is run by Mr. Conlin, we have American Wells Society Certification Program, we're a test center, and those students are coming out with industry-recognized credentials. So, I'm not trying to, um, make us, this an adversarial conversation, I just want the audience to know what Sussex Tech has to offer. On October 6th, we have a 50th anniversary of celebrating our opening of our school. I will open my doors from now until then for anybody in the public to come to my office, meet with myself, my staff, and you could pick our brains about why Sussex Tech. We're a great school, and we're here to partner with the college, but please don't let the high school student that was characterized in that discussion focus on Sussex Tech. The college has a mission, they have a plan, I respect that, but if it's about looking at where the program should be placed, and if that conversation brings my high school into the mix, we need to be involved with that discussion. And if it's about looking at how we could best utilize funds in the county, I would like to be part of that conversation. But please, and once again, Sussex Tech has a unique opportunity for students, we educate them, they're ready for industry, we expect them to come into our school, they wear uniforms just like they would in their jobs, that was mentioned earlier. So, I don't know if I articulated well enough our mission, my students and my passion for this school, but I know those gentlemen and ladies back there do, I'm, I'm sure they're going to step up in a few minutes when they have open opportunity to do that. But again, we want to continue that strong relationship with the college. We have an agreement here, I'd like to sign with Dr. Conley following this meeting, and I would like to be here to promote career and technical education in Sussex County. Thank you.
Gus, if I may say, we would be delighted to have a liaison with your board and to have some of our board members meet with your board members on a regular basis.
Judge Barker, can you elaborate on the, you've mentioned 4.5 million renovation, 2 million acquisition, but then I've heard that that's not accurate, there's actually 4.5 million total project. Can you give us the total cost of this project?
Yes, and I, I did not make that clear. The, I'm going to stand up here, I think you can hear me better. Can you all hear me back there? The total project is 4.2 million by our estimate. That means building it out for the 300 students and for all of the programs that we anticipate putting on that campus, that includes the $2 million purchase price. So, we're not talking about 2 plus 4.2, we're talking about 4.2 altogether. And that money has already been bonded, it is already sitting there, waiting to be used. And as I said, the difference between a 20-year mortgage and a 40-year mortgage can be very substantial, so the sooner we can get going and start using and pulling that money and developing the project, the, the less money it will cost us in the long run.
And just to be clear about that particular bond issuance, uh, the taxpayers are not paying interest on the money that have not been utilized from that bond.
Correct. Correct.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I, I want to thank everybody for coming today. Uh, I think this is a great opportunity for all of us to sit together. Um, in some respects, it's a, it's really a great thing, in the other respect, that it's unfortunate that, uh, the college and the VOTEC and the freeholders haven't, uh, communicated, uh, better. Uh, my, a couple of questions and, and concerns that I have is that, uh, you did a, a very nice presentation on the, uh, what the college does, but here are some questions that I would have, uh, for the college. Um, do we have, uh, you're talking about a 4.5 million dollar project, and the money is available, that, that money is for other projects. I have not seen anything in writing to the board, other than, I know it was voted on, as to why those projects are no longer needed and whether or not we can come back for that funding, it's a future date. Um, I looked at that and was more prepared to quit, uh, the building, it's the air conditioning. The other concern I have is, uh, how does it work between the VOTEC and the students coming from the VOTEC school to the college, and how do the two of those things mesh so that students from here can continue and get an additional, uh, degrees? And you have a copy, is there a plan on how to integrate those students as well as other students? Uh, is there something in writing on that? Does, I don't know, I just wanted to, huh? I'm just going to lay it out there and then, at some point in time, because I don't know if they can answer it, uh, uh, you know, do we have a copy of the people that are donating the $900,000? Has there been a, is there a financial plan that projects the long-term cost of the project to the county? So, in other words, are we looking at, you know, a 10-year plan or a 5-year plan of the cost projected number of students that will come? The other question I have is environmental issues. Um, I've had some conversations with, with, uh, some, you know, someone at the, you know, Dr. Conley on this, but my, my concern is, if you're going to move into a building and you're going to continue to do the environmental study and find out there's a problem in the building under the concrete, say for example, um, you're going to have to move people out while they renovate, uh, while they clean it up. So, I don't know, I'd like to know if there's a plan for that. One of the things, uh, that happens when you buy a house and do a, do content, you do a home inspection, uh, and then they have to give that information to the lender, uh, the freeholders are at that point where, uh, it's just maybe, but I don't have anything in writing as to the plan, the condition of the building, uh, whether there's been an inspection, and who's responsible for renovation of parts of that building. So, those are, uh, from a financial point of view, those are the issues that the Freehold Board will have to address, uh, in our budgets as time goes on. So, we're looking at a stagnant point in time right now, and I think what we really need to do is to say, okay, we're going to move into this building, and then what, what are the projected costs down the road, so that everybody knows what we're buying. County moved into a, was it Spring Street building many years ago, of course, I don't know how many of them to fix it, there's actually a section on the second floor which has never been finished in that building. I think that solar project, someone brought that up, Matt rushed into that project because there was money coming from the federal government, it was going to end, um, there was nothing in writing showing a projection of cost, and there's potential debt, a potential downfall of it. So, I'm concerned, and this is nothing, uh, against the project, I'm talking against the project, I'm concerned about the finances of the project, the meat, the meat and potatoes of this project, so that we don't end up finding ourselves fighting down the road with some issues. If the project costs X number of dollars and, and you want to move forward, that's what we need to know. And I want, I'd like to have our financial people at the county take a look at the finances of the college, so that we're all on the same page. That's all I have to say.
Do you want a response to that now?
You can respond on, Jerk.
Yes, please.
Okay. And I'll stand up because I think I can be heard a little bit better. Um, let me just run down the list, uh, as I, uh, scribbled it down here as you were talking. You talked about, uh, the 4.5 million and what other projects that may have been designated for. Well, there are a number of aspects to that. First of all, we now have, uh, people on our staff who can do work in-house, so that we don't have to go out to bid for a plumber every time a toilet gets stopped up. So, many of the projects that we had initially designated for these monies, for these monies, have either already been done, and some of them have been done by in-house. And the other aspect is we have shifting priorities, because as we are moving around the campus and looking at different utilization of different spaces, our priorities change. So, we don't anticipate coming back for bonding with those projects in the future, near or far. Concerning the, um, VOTEC and continuing for educational degrees, uh, we had a, we had a meeting with Gus, uh, was it a week ago, two weeks ago, uh, and we talked about that very issue. We are, we, we talked about doing concurrent enrollment for students who are in the VOTEC and they can be earning college credits. can be earning college credits at the same time. And we also talked about giving the VOTEC graduates credit for the courses that they have taken where they have achieved their certifications, and giving them that credit. They don't have to repeat those classes, so that then they can go on and take their business classes in their marketing and their management and their gen ed classes without having to duplicate that. And it will certainly cost them a great deal less in the end. With respect to the donors, except for Alex Gabel, who put an ad in the newspaper, and Atlantic Health who has indicated that they don't mind us telling out, that they gave us $100,000 toward the culinary program. And their specific reasons for contributing to these programs were that A, they need the skills, and B, they want to develop downtown Newton. Atlantic Health is expanding their hospital facility in Newton area and their medical facilities. They have more employees coming in, their employees are coming up to Morris County, and they want a viable town. So that, those donors, the remaining donors have requested that we not disclose at this point who they are. We do have the money, as I indicated, we have $390,000 in hand, and we have commitments for $940,000. With respect to the financial plan, the long-term costs, we are going to be happy to discuss that with you in an executive session meeting as soon as we can set it up. With respect to the environmental issues...
Just, I got the pause right there. We would not, that would not be a topic acceptable for a closed session at the Freeholder Board.
Okay, it's involving contract negotiations and...
Budget? I don't see, I mean, pass it off to the professionals, but I don't see how that could be, I don't see how that could be legally a closed session, I don't.
Well, our council has indicated to us that it is because it involves negotiations, contracts, and we can certainly discuss that, our council can discuss with North Council what the legal ramifications of that are.
Can we have a slight aside on that right now? Because one of the concerns I have here is the financial aspect, and I think the people in the public, certainly people speaking in favor or against it, I think that one of the big issues is the finances here, and I just, I'm just as unclear as to why we're trying to keep this quiet.
It's not a question of keeping it quiet, it's a question of being able to go out to bid and to negotiate good economical contracts without it being skewed by people knowing what money is out there.
Can I speak, I spent many years in contract, in public contract, and I spent many years in public contract on the other side, bidding contracts for schools, and you can negotiate. It's public contract. So what you need to do is you need to go to your architect and call up the parameters of what your project costs, and then you have to put it out to public bid. You cannot negotiate on that, that's why you have public bid law. And I'll challenge any attorney on that, because I've had to deal with that myself. I've had to go to court to say that I, in a favorable way, because somebody was not prepared and not qualified for the contract. So I have to share Mr. Rosen's thoughts that I think that us discussing budget is a long ways away from negotiation. I think if you have a negotiation, negotiate with a particular employee or something like that, I can see that. But in terms of public contract law, I don't think it fills it. And somebody else can question, I just know the rules I was under for 25 years.
Now, Freeholder Graham, I would say my opinion on this, my perspective would be that negotiations, whether it's about the real estate negotiation, that process is still absolutely active and in play, and all the finances sort of figuring to that. And it is truly a bid, you have to contract for bid process and so forth, and that there are, and we're just taking advice of council, but that, that can also be corrupted by certain kinds of negotiations, so we're biting with that. But in terms of negotiation contracts, I would agree, that's not really what we're talking about, we're talking about two different things. We've got contracts, bid and quote process, and then we've got the real estate negotiation. Those, both of those things are done, so I apologize.
The only thing with the real estate negotiations, we've heard over and over, is 2.4 million acquisition with 400,000 give back as part of that 960,000. So, you know, if we use that as a placeholder for discussing a budget, it's in the public, it might have been reported in the paper, I'm not sure, will we corrupt any sort of potential negotiations?
I don't understand the numbers.
I didn't understand the numbers at all.
We have, as a Freeholder Board, we've heard in two meetings now that the acquisition price is 2.4 million, with 400,000 being given back by the McGuires as a donation.
No, that's not accurate. The acquisition price is $2 million. The agreement is that we will pay $2,250,000, and they will give us 250,000 back for the money.
Okay, so we can use that in the budget, and then we won't corrupt in any way the negotiation process that's ongoing with the McGuires for acquisition of the process, of the problem?
Okay, you mentioned some of the numbers, and that's where I got confused.
They're irrelevant to this discussion, that was just the total, the total donations to the project.
The total donations that we have in hand?
And, and, and in pledge.
Pledge is $940,000, donations in hand $390,000.
Okay, let me, let me do something here, please. Okay, what I understand, you're right in your own, if you're talking about your negotiations and your world...
I'm sorry, I'm talking to them.
What I said was, if I understand this, you are right in talking about your negotiations and your strategic issues, those are specific exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act. To the extent that you're talking about your budget and those items, I agree with you. From here, instead of doing it up here, maybe we should have a little better understanding of what should be in public and what should be in closed session.
We don't need to.
You guys all right with that?
Yeah, I don't know that we need to come to that conclusion this morning. You and I certainly can talk about it, Kevin, and work it out. It's important that the dialogue be continuing, it's important that we share information, and it's important that we keep you informed.
Hey, Doug? Right? Yes?
What are you up to, Judge?
Well, in terms of the inspection, property has been inspected, it's been inspected by the engineers, so we know what the aspects of the property are. The environmental inspection is still continuing. As you know, the McGuires are responsible for all of the remediation, so that comes out of their $2 million in terms of the purchase price, they are responsible for the remediation. We have been asked, okay, so what happens if you have a spill while you're in there?
No, the question is, will the interior of the building be reviewed prior to moving in?
Yes, it's already been reviewed, as a matter of fact, and we've already done remediation in there. In terms of if we have a spill after this, because we've already done the environmental mapping, or I shouldn't say we've done it, we're in the process of doing the environmental mapping, we will know what's there before we are in there, because our classes are not actually in there yet. When the environmental mapping is finished, then we will know what's there, so what will be their responsibility, and if we should have a spill after that, then we'll know what's our responsibility.
Is there a plan, is there a plan, a written plan for the number of students you expect and the, you know, like a projected plan? Yeah, I know, you know what the cost is for equipment and stuff, but is there a long-term plan that you've looked at for the, for the, you know, number, you know, you expect to increase the students, you know, expect additional growth, additional cost, the money for equipment down the road, do we have some projection of that?
Herb, the answer to that is, yes, we do that work anytime we develop a new program, we conduct projections, projection analysis, cost analysis, et cetera. So we do that with that.
That available to you?
Again, we feel that's our attorneys advisors, that's connected to the same overall process and what we got going on, so.
Then how can I make a decision, how can I make a decision to vote for Conley if I don't understand what the long-term plan is?
Yeah, I think, I think the idea is to have that conversation in a different forum.
What about the public?
Sir, please.
Well, what we're asking, if you, if you're going to put, let's just say hypothetically, if you're going to put a new program at the college, let's say it's sugar period, and we say, how many students are going to come, what's the long-term program we develop, we would say, here's our projected plan. I don't know how that would be confidential, but if you're saying it's confidential, I'm going to bring that to, count the council to, thank you.
Can I bring up an issue that may be on the news of, you, the McGuire family who owns the property is currently paying down in Newton roughly $80,000 a year in taxes. Has there been any discussion between the two parties about a give back of some sort of payment of local taxes? And I ask this because I did the numbers here, we saw in our presentation, 300 students, that's $80,000 a year. That means the taxpayers in Newton are going to be subsidizing the college to $266 for every student that attends every year now and forever.
Pilot discussion was for the municipal portion of the taxes and not for the county or the school.
We can't hear you.
The pilot discussion was...
The pilot discussion was for the municipal portion of the taxes and not the school and the county, because the county will be paying the county portion of the taxes.
So, you know, typically towns are about 20% of the total, the total tax burden, so that means the town, the taxpayers in Newton are still subsidizing, assuming it's a 20-80 split, with 20% your cost, 80% for everything else, still subsidizing the students to the $213 per year.
Yeah, I believe that may be partially answered by Tom Russo, would now be a time to, like, some visionaries there?
As far as the pilot goes, the director's correct, the current taxation on the property is $80,000, the new tax rate is 33%, not 20%. But the reality is that we have a longer-term vision for the use of the property beyond the programs that the college is looking at currently in the short term. So whether there's a pilot addressing the 33% currently is one thing, and that's for the council and the college to discuss, but our vision, which was enumerated slightly in one of the slides, is housing, retail, and parking. Those are the concerns we have, this, for us, it's not a question of what programs VOTEC offers, which I'm sure are great. I'm sure the college offers great programs, and I'm not going to get in between the two. Our focus purely is the land use of the McGuires property, it's in a redevelopment area, there are nine parcels in the redevelopment zone. Our concern is how those parcels are utilized for the betterment of the downtown and the community as a whole. So when you start to get into housing and retail and parking, things that are not necessarily the strong suits of the county or the college, quite frankly, those are the things where you bring in a developer, like the gentleman who's in the audience, or other people that are interested parties, and then you start to have the conversations about pilots and financing, and how those things are impacting the parking authority that owns the three parcels that impact the Adams lot, the McGuires parcels, which are three, and then the other three that are privately held.
Just to use the new number, 33, 66% split, that means $175.99 subsidized per student from the taxpayers. Just to make clear. So has there been, Tom, specific, has there been specific discussions about whether the pilot is going to be definite, or a 20-year pilot?
No, we haven't had those types of negotiations or discussions, other than what I just publicly stated, which I've mentioned to the Freeholder Director at our meeting in Greg Paul's conference room a few weeks ago, and what we've discussed with the college, is Newton's, Newton's looking to be made whole financially in the short term, because we don't want to see the loss of the ratable. But our concern is more of the longer-term issue of how the property is utilized, how it affects the downtown, and then what the financial challenges and opportunities are between the college, the county, and the town. So there's been no, there's been no financial sheets run, there's been no term sheets, so don't worry about any over requests or anything. There's nothing that's been done in that regard, it's been purely conversational. But we've said publicly, a third of the town of Newton is already tax exempt, we're not looking for more tax exempt properties, we're looking for commercial ratables, because that not only benefits the town, it benefits the county as a whole.
Are you anticipating paying some sort of pilot? Okay, well, they can say that they're... All right. How many square footage is the McGuire property?
How big is the McGuire property? Yeah, it's 2.7 acres.
Okay, and the buildings?
Buildings are about 27,000 square feet, rental.
Okay. And are you, are you satisfied that that will house, I mean, all these programs that you need to, need to put into place?
I am satisfied that the plan that we have in place will be able to fit into the McGuire property as it is, so the plan that we have for welding, diesel, automotive, culinary, construction trades, and if I did not say machine tool, I should have, and possibly HV. Pretty sure all of those can fit in there, but I think...
With 100% utilization of those?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. But the, but the issue primarily is construction trades. Construction trades requires a lot of square footage to do that properly, and to be our hope to do that more properly is very, very difficult to do, so we got some choices to make. I would say also we have some aspirations for another sort of flames and steel type of technical career program, which we anticipate might be mostly housed and walk-hill, because we don't have the land to do it, we need a pole lab. This would be a collaboration that we do at JC P and L, and we're going to begin some conversations about that in a couple of years. That would obviously not be housed at the McGuire place. I will say that our desire to serve the economy and do other things would be benefited if it was a larger facility, but although we have intended, we'll fit there for it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from anyone else?
First of all, thank you very much, all of you. I'm pretty impressed, and I know everybody's facing the bull here, we're all trying to get around, get our minds around something that has a positive aspect, but it has a lot of questions. And the questions are, some of them are public, in fact, most of them, if not all of them, should be public, but we're obviously hitting something of an impasse here. First of all, Mr. Bobla and Dr. Conley, we did work over the last three years to try and bring a closer relationship between the college and to the, also to the Sussex Tech. And the main reason for that was because we only have a certain amount of money. There was a state we made a little longer, a little while ago, that when it came to bonds, that we weren't in a competitive, we are in a competitive, it's very competitive, because it's just a certain amount of money that the county can put up for bonds. When I first became a Freeholder about six years ago, the bonding was up around 13 and a half, 14 million dollars, and we tried to move that down to, we're down into the $10 million region. But remember, we have a $100 million budget, so every year we have to bond a little $10 million, we're trying to get that under control. And certain people have made comments that I agree with, that you should be putting certain things to referendum, and I think this may be one of those things, that'd be a much better idea to put to referendum. We're taking money that was sent for other purposes, for other buildings on that campus, and now what we're doing is we're saying, let's use that money for this, but if we have a problem later on, we'll go back and we'll bond that. I believe those days are over. I feel that those days are over, and I'm not particularly in favor of us continuing on of cleaning out those accounts. There were still buildings up on that campus that require more attention, and I believe that this building, being almost 100 years old, has its, has its challenges, and it's going to require more. I know, I'm hearing that it's going to be $4.2 million called in, but I haven't seen a, an architect's listing of what it's going to cost, I haven't seen a professional engineer's listing of what it's going to cost, I haven't seen a subsurface evaluation, I haven't heard anything. seen a, um, an architect's listing of what it's going to cost, I haven't seen a professional engineer's listing of what it's going to cost, I haven't seen a, a subsurface evaluation, I haven't heard anything about borings, I haven't heard anything about any of these issues. Now, let me put that in the context of, I support these programs, I completely support these programs, I've asked for years for some sort of a white paper from Dr. Conley and such regarding middle skills, because I had an inkling that there's something going on, but I have read this in the Wall Street Journal, I've read this in Forbes magazine, I've read it in other periodicals, that this is the trend, this is something that we need to get into, I don't disagree with that, I don't disagree with that in the very, very least, but what I do concern, what does concern me is us focusing on one particular property in one particular place, now, I understand Newton's concerns very much, to try and enhance and, and expand your, your downtown, all of these things are on the table, but I, I watched the presentation, and I watched about, uh, two-thirds, or maybe three-quarters of that presentation, basically trying to reconcile the fact that the college is relevant, the college is relevant, I stipulate to that, I'm very concerned about where we're doing this and the finances, I believe that what we're going to wind up doing is, my gut feeling is, is that you're going to have a lot of maintenance, you're going to have a lot of extra operating, now, I think that in eighteen months to, to maybe three years, you're going to come back and you're going to say, all right, now this program is now costing so much that four million dollars you're giving us in operating is not enough, we're now going to have to move that up to another number, if it's ten percent, is it four hundred thousand dollars, is it twenty percent, is it eight hundred thousand dollars, I don't know what that's going to be, but I, I, those are the figures that we need to find out about, we couldn't go to an SBA and open up a candy store without a set of financials, and listen, ladies and gentlemen, I respect every one of you, but sometimes we have to set back and say, listen, what's the reality here, how far can we go with this, I don't want to under-capitalize something, I've been in this boat, I've been in this boat with, with other businesses in my past, that have started out undercapitalized and have come fresh again, the county is no longer in a position that we can just turn around and bond an extra three million dollars, the, the, the tech schools come to us every year, and they ask for, uh, uh, capital that they need for sewer block processing plant, or for this room here, or, so that number falls into place, you got a couple of million dollars there, the roads, even though there's a gas tax that has enhanced money in, what they don't tell you is, is that twenty-five percent of any dollar we get from the state, we have to come up with in soft costs, so there's another million, two million, three million dollars that we have to cover, then I, then you have the, the regular maintenance, the trucks, all of these things go into a po, up to a pie, we are competing for those dollars, don't make any mistake about it, we are competing for those dollars, and what we're going to be finding is, in the next few years, is going to be a lot of pressure to go to referendum, so my question to you is, why are we clearing out that money and now it can be substantially helping the existing campus, moving it over to another purpose, when you're going to have to come back at another point in time and re-bond? I, I'm, I'm concerned about that, I'm also concerned about the overall, I'm concerned about the overall operating budget, I need a projection to find out what that overall operating budget's going to be in the next year, I figure it's not going to be effective next year, but it probably will be effective a year after, and a year after that, I think that within, I think eighteen months, three years, somewhere in there, you're going to have to come back and you're going to have to say, all right, fine, we can't operate our four million anymore, and I know that they say there's tuition that comes in on one side, it's a three-part formula, and, and it is, one-third is supposed to come from the state, one-third comes from the, um, the county, and one-third comes from tuition, tuitions have been rising, the county's numbers have been flat, they're, they're right, and Mr. Boglak, this, uh, your, your staff said the same thing, that we have been very much flat in the last few years, so you, you see what the trend is here, now, if this is the way we have to be presented, I'm going to, I'm going to put the five-hundred pound corral in the room right out there, we don't have to say this, it's already done, this is a fake, it's done, you already have the authorization to go ahead with this, this is a public forum, to let the public understand what we're doing, if we're hiding the numbers, then what are we, what are we doing here? Let's put the numbers out there, what is, I do not believe that we're going to be negotiating with any contractors, it's, we're going to have to have somebody who's going to be coming in there and give us what the specific numbers are, I say we take them out there, and I say that because I support this project, I support its mission, I support what it's doing, I'm just not sure that this particular project in this particular place is financially the best thing that we can do, this college, this, this facility here has, has room for it, and then we may be able to lend the monies and make it more cost-effective, so, that's, that's my sense.
Can I say something? George, I, I, I have a sort of perplexed, and we don't quote that word taxpayers, that we're not watching, and I'm perplexed that, I'm, I'm perplexed that we don't think that...
Can't hear you, please speak into the microphone.
I, I've been around a while in this county, okay, almost fifty years, okay, and I've paid a lot of taxes, fifty years, and I'm a little perplexed that you sit there and talk about taxes, when you don't think we're taxpayers, I'm a taxpayer, I have family that live in the county, I'm not moving to North Carolina, I figure the property bill doesn't matter that way, but I'm not going out of the county, I'm here for the county, and I think everybody will reward it, okay? The question is, this is a project, and I, and, 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 listen, I respect all your positions, your elected officials, you have a right to that, but here you have a project, I've spent time on school boards, let me go and tell you something about referendums, you got me on a run, okay, let me tell you something about referendums, I was on a school board in Sparta, put a referendum up, right, thirty-eight million dollars, to build a high school, or the swimming pool, okay, voters rejected it by ninety votes, this is what I don't like about referendumism, to say to the judge. Thirty-eight million dollars, new high school, swimming pool, renovated, the old high school for a middle school, voters rejected, oh, so much money, so what did we end up in Sparta with? A thirty-million-dollar middle school, and a seventy-five-million-dollar retake of a, of a, of a high school that was built in nineteen fifty-nine, it cost me over a hundred million dollars in Sparta, for, for something I couldn't have done until thirty-eight, so referendums, I have a problem on any of that part of the country. Number two, again, I've been involved in economic development, I've been involved in school boards, I've been involved in the community college, I've been involved in favor of Congress. This is a project that we should all be embracing, and I, and I, and, you know, each of your freeholders who spoke, said, oh, I'm, I'm in favor of the project, I'm in favor of the community college, but I don't like this, for whatever reason, that's what you said. This is a project that over, almost fifty years I've worked with the county, and I've seen this project, and I've looked at it in the sense that it is for Newton, it's our county seat, it's my taxpayers' money that are going to be used to do it, it's for the benefit of everybody in the county, it's in cooperation, it could be in cooperation with the town of Newton, the board, and the freeholders if they'd like, and, and the VOTAC, we should embrace it, it's going to make us proud one day, if I could use the line from a movie, and all I've heard is, is, is arguments against it, I've looked at the financials, I've been there for two years, I've looked at this, it's pretty solid, ladies and gentlemen, it's not out there, as far as, the VOTAC has done a great job, Community College does a great job, the town of Newton should have their say, I, 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 I don't want to spend money in the town of Newton, but I will because I think it benefits the county, so I don't know why we're going through this process, it can be known, people can come to the, the Community College Board meetings, they're publicized, we've talked about it, there's nothing to hide, and I just think we got to move on, and stop, stop it, get together, embrace this project, make it work for the county, make it work for Newton, make it work for the VOTAC, and make it work for the Community College, and let's get together on it, at this point, it doesn't seem we are, and I think it's due to the disadvantage and the financial detriment of every citizen in the county of Sussex, thank you very much.
I, I, I fully, fully agree with you, I don't think anybody on this board has said, we're getting some project.
I need a mic.
Give it one a compliment. Is it working?
Your stand-up will be heard better.
Is that better? Okay, love, clear, uh, I forgot what I was going to say. Um, I don't think anybody on this board has been opposed to the project, uh, we're in favor of the project, a couple of things that I haven't heard that I think are very important are the number of students that are involved in a project, or that you already have involved in a project, or that you anticipate are going to be involved in a project, and Mr. Curcio, contrary to what you're saying over there, jump behind this, there was a time when a group of people jumped behind the solar project and got stuck with it, now, we don't know what this is going to cost, and we need to know that, and for some reason we don't know that, so if you're going to present a project, you have to present the whole project, what it's going to cost, what it's going to cost in five years and ten years, and whether you're going to come back and say, we need another couple of million dollars, because we don't have it anymore, and now, with a governor that's saying, education is going to be free, and everybody knows what the word free means, it comes out of the taxpayers' pocket, so that everybody now is going to rush to the community colleges for their free education, where is the money going to come from? It's going to come from the taxpayer, and I think the taxpayer has to know what they can anticipate coming down.
There's different elements associated with this whole situation, the project, the new trend in education, for the first time you actually have businesses coming to a college and saying, hey, look, we need a new workforce, would you please begin to look at the trends, and would you begin to plan so that you can fulfill the needs, so that our business can be successful in Sussex County? That's, that's a big deal, when you're working on redevelopment, one of the elements of redevelopment is getting the businesses to come in, to bring developers in that make up the taxes that you would be losing from this particular project, what developers look like, in my experience, in my own borough, trying to do a redevelopment project, is they're looking to see who wants to invest in the area, they don't always want to be the first one to jump in, they want to see who's willing to make an investment, and that first investment can become a catalyst for a bigger redevelopment project, but somebody has to make it, and right now the opportunity is here for the school to make it, education is another element of redevelopment, all of these elements come together to bring growth, to bring money, to bring new tax revenue into your borough, or into, into your town, and, and that's one of the importance of, of this type of a project coming into the town of Newton, who needs that catalyst to start, so that other people see, well, other people are going to invest, this is something that's going to move forward, it's going to happen, I want to be a part of it, I'm amazed that you have all these business owners that are giving almost a million dollars to see this type of education begin to develop in our county, I understand the financial side, and I believe that at the next meeting we're going to hear of that financial side, so that, that is going to be something that is ongoing, and will be coming to the freeholder board, and if possible, out to the public, however, I actually went to look at the building the other day, and, um, uh, the building is perfect for what they're, they're trying to do here, the layout and the, uh, the type of, of space that they have there works perfectly for all of those different, um, classes that you want to bring into that particular site, uh, so I personally think it's a great opportunity for the entire county, and I think that the tax money we're worried about will come back as the redevelopment develops, you know, in our area, you take one building, I'm just going to take a pack on it with the first building we built for redevelopment, and I'm just going to throw a few numbers out there, um, I think the first building was a, a broken-down foundation on an empty lot with a old rusty gate around it, was paying about six thousand in taxes, with the first building there, they're paying close to ninety thousand dollars, so if you can, if you can really start this, the money comes in as the development goes forward, but to have the support of your, your businesses already there, the money coming in from them as well, um, and you have the college doing such a great job in the planning process, you have three hundred students ready to go, it's, it really looks like it's something that's going to propel itself into the future, and as we've been seeing from your presentation, talking about over and over, is that technology is moving at a very fast pace, and I don't care what area of business you're in, technology is changing everything, the skills and the education have to go up the ladder, they have to get, uh, to the higher levels, and it gives opportunity for our two, our students not to be, just be educated, to learn the skills, become a workforce, but the businesses are here that want that workforce, so you're now making opportunities for more jobs, so there's a very positive aspect to this whole project, and I think, as you're saying, we need to embrace it and find a way to make this work, and I think that's where, what we're here doing, we're trying to all come together and listen to your complaints, and listen to your concerns, and listen to your fears, and listen to your vision, and then find a way to bring it all together, so I think this is a healthy engagement here of all the different groups, and I think when we get the last piece, which is the, the financial piece, it'll begin to make more sense to all of us, so I personally want to thank everybody who's here, I want to thank you for your input, I want to thank you for your hard work, and for being a part of the vision, and I really appreciate everybody who spoke, because you all brought different issues out that, that we have to look at, we are concerned about, and we'll get through it, so I think this is the first step to a multiple-step, um, activity that we're going to go through, a process we're going to move through, in order to get to a point where we feel more comfortable with this, but I do think that everybody is engaged in the, in the fact that they understand the need, and I think the presentation is excellent to give you a better understanding of where technology is going, and how Sussex County is going to move in, in that same area.
I just want to say one more thing, Mr. Curcio, love that, it was good, I like when you got it amped up, yeah, I like, I like when you got it amped up there, okay, or, no, no disrespect for anyone on this board, I, I, a lot of respect for everybody, I know we're all taxpayers, I know we're all looking at things from different perspectives.
John, uh, just to try to move things along, so that you're just not, uh, sitting here going over and over things, it's my understanding that what the freeholders are asking for is a five-to-ten-year projection of capital costs and operational costs from the, for, for the McGuire property.
Yes, that's correct.
Is that really what you're asking for?
Yes, that'd be great to have that, yes, and we'd also like, I think, to have, uh, well, I'm going to, I'm going to move forward if we can, so if we can get that from you, that'd be great, uh, so I think you can provide, and figure out whether it's going to be closed session or open session, and move forward with that.
Right, and, and, and that related to the overall operational costs of the college?
Yes, so just the total budget, because ultimately the, the, the freeholder board is going to be, uh, paying from the local perspective, all the, the bonding costs for this, and then the other portion taken out by the state, but, so from, we absolutely need to go over the finances of this thing, and, and I think there needs to be, in doing so, hopefully we'll gain some trust that, that, uh, that, uh, things are as they are said they are, because as of right now, I've heard a lot of, you know, we've looked at it, everything's great, but none of us have looked at it, so, so getting those numbers to us, I think would go a long way towards making this, making us feel more comfortable with the project.
Thanks.
I'd like to move on to a different, uh, topic, and I'd like to ask Gus and John, if you've discussed dual-concurrent enrollment, I heard a little bit about, uh, for the, from the, uh, the one program, dual-concurrent enrollment, uh, have you discussed dual-concurrent enrollment with respect to these programs, say, senior year or VOTAC student?
We haven't formally discussed these programs that the college has mentioned today, but we would like to use the cost mythology model as our, um, benchmark to kick off these discussions, I believe that every program that was discussed today, we can have a discussion on building a relationship that is concurrent relationship, that our teachers in those programs have the ability to teach to industry standards, our students are coming out with credentials that are recognized by the industry, they have the opportunity to go into the workforce through the CIE program, um, last year I believe, Mr. Ward's automotive students, we had eight students out into the field, uh, you can correct me if I was wrong, so our students are out there, they're working, we are a different type of high school, like I mentioned earlier, we're not a local comprehensive school that has a CTE program, we are trained in this, and I know we have a benefit to working with the college to build those relationships so our students can transition into the community college and take those, um, courses that they didn't pick up concurrently through math, science, and the other requirements, that they could come out with their degrees more quickly, um, we would like to be like other schools in the state that are vocational, where students can maybe possibly graduate on our school, the high school diploma, and a college degree at the same time in the associate's area, and again, we're here to partner with that.
To elaborate on that a little bit more, it's, um, Gus's encapsulated...
To elaborate on that a little bit more, Gus's encapsulated, well, some other distinctions to make. Cosmetology programs is distinct for several reasons, but to be able to take that model and translate it into these other programs is our goal. There are several ways that this can be accomplished, I won't bore people with sort of the academic and ministrual piece of this, but I will say that the high school diploma and the college credential, whether it is a college certificate, or whether it is a college degree, is governed by the Middle States Commission on Higher Education, are things that we can do and things that we cannot do. One thing is absolutely true, we cannot offer college-level credentials to benefit Sussex Technical School students unless we have those programs. We cannot simply be a warehouse of degrees and certificates, a program we don't actually have and we do not govern. So we have to have the programs, actually, we have to govern those programs, the curriculum is ours, or by some kinds of articulation agreements that are permissible, then licenses can be substituted by what is known as a prior learning assessment model, so that the Sussex Tech students can get those both, industry-valued and industry-recognized credentials, and the academic credentials, that give them educational momentum towards college degrees. So it's important work, there's, again, it's fluid, it changes a little bit, and we're actively engaged in that, we've been doing some of that for the most part up to this point. Our relationship with Sussex Technical School and concurrent enrollment is very, very rich, but it is mostly, I wouldn't say incoherent, but it is not attached, it's not tethered in the way that it needs to be, things can be aligned better as well, and that's work of the future. Those are important conversations, and we fit that in, so that we can achieve the mutual vision that we have. Gus was on campus, as Judge Parker said about two weeks ago, and he was saying, "Hi, hi, hi," to all the students who come from Sussex Tech to our college. And so, this foundation here, and expansion and elaboration on learning, it's in complete evidence, and it was once again emphasized as Gus walked on campus, wow, it's a great thing.
With respect to the dual concurrent enrollment working together, can you, to help you elaborate a little bit on what's going to happen in the November election, that question on balance, and in particular, how does that potentially play into the funding of this project and funding of future local tech, because I assume you need capital projects too? A concern I have to hold forward is that, I'm a little concerned that we may be not keeping the balance correct here, and SCCC has received a lot of capital funding in the last four years if this is included in it, and you need capital funding too, so how does that help balance that out?
Currently, the Bond Act that was proposed by Senator Sweeney and Senator Earl Ho, initially was about expansion of career technical education in the state to allow students who were being turned away through the 21-county vocational schools, opportunities in our 21-county programs. When that went to the governor's desk, they added the school security piece to the bond, also the water issue about remediation of schools. The governor has reallocated the funding and reduced it, so currently, on the table for November will be $350 million for vocational school expansion to create new programs that are the middle-skilled type of programs that we've been talking about, that will benefit the county and the state. Of that $350 million, a share will go to school security initiatives throughout the state, for any school district. There has not been a defined amount that would earmark for vocational schools, and as compared to the school security issue. So we're working on a needs assessment right now for Sussex Tech, on what we would go out to work with the Freeholders on, in terms of how much money we would look to expand. Some of the programs that earmarked, we were talking about just yesterday, is a Mechatronic program that would be in the area of manufacturing, and the health science area, where we could do a nursing program, a sports medicine program, and home healthcare. We feel that those are needs of the county and the area, and we could definitely fill the enrollment there. In terms of working with the college, $50 million of the Bond Act is earmarked for county colleges, for expansion for CTE, we would have to have the grant application have our articulation with the higher ed, so those parameters have not been outlined yet by the state. Once it's passed by the voters, then we'll get more feedback from the state level on what the terms and conditions of the grant application will look like. But it's all about expansion and more students coming here for those skills.
That's also our understanding, that's the Securing Our Children's Future Act, as Gus said, talking about $350 million for high schools and the technical schools throughout the state, $50 million allocated for community colleges, and $100 million for water infrastructure. The conversations you'd imagine for all the community colleges primarily surrounds the $50 million, we're talking about the $50 million for the community colleges and their interest in trying to apply for that, whether we're talking about whatever portions can be available to Sussex County Technical Schools for the $350 million. Both sides of that equation require partnership. We don't know what kind of partnership the state is going to be expecting on that, we don't have any details on that. Gus and I have had two preliminary conversations about that, and how it impacts the county, not exactly sure, I don't know, we have not had a conversation with the Board of Trustees about whether we would be applying for that. We would expect that if we applied for that, that our application for Chapter 12 would go down correspondingly with the match required for whatever we applied for, it'd be around a million dollars, or less than a million dollars if we applied for that, and whether this is a whole park or a joint project or not, is representative. You asked some projections, we can't provide any projections right now in this forum, but we have done analysis of different scenarios, a collaboration, partnership with Sussex Tech, about this bond, particular levels, bond at a different level, this campus, the two campuses, if we do this, there's a lot of variables in there, we've looked at all the permutations on it.
Excuse me, Director Rose, we have a number of our board members who are having to leave, and our legal counsel had to leave also because they have prior commitments. I'm wondering if we could bring this, we obviously are going to have a...
Let's wrap it up. I think we've had a long discussion here, if you want to wrap it up, or do that, you know, go back around and discuss the issue of finance.
Right, which we fully intend to do, we have a full presentation on finances for you, but you may want to have the other...
Sure, anything anyone else wants to say before we...
Yes, Director.
We did have a couple of presentations that we had discussed in Greg's conference room regarding the use of the Maguire's property, which should only take a few minutes, if we could, if you could allow the developer, John Cresselate, and his architect, Wayne McCabe, a few moments, and then also our town planner, Jessica Caldwell, to put together some conceptuals for everyone to take a look at for a few minutes.
Let me just ask, if the town also asked you to do that presentation now, because I understand it's about a 15-minute presentation, we can do that, and then we can continue with the remaining aspects of our meeting at another date. I understand they were prepared to do it now.
Or we could wrap this meeting up and just hold another one in for a few more speakers.
Well, as I said, what I thought I heard Tom also say is that they're prepared for the...
When we had our meeting with the Freeholder Director and the other members, the two members from each board, it was agreed that the town of Newton would be allowed a few minutes to discuss the utilization, and with all respect, kind of the junior member of the group up here, we've been very patient for three hours, I think you could give us a few minutes to talk about what we see as the vision for the nine parcels in the town of Newton.
In fairness, I'd like to hear the presentation from Newton, and if members of the board have to leave, I mean, that happens, yeah, the presentation's on film, but they can, you know, possibly leave and then look at that presentation that you're on, and you know that this meeting has gone on now for over three hours, I just think that the presentation, if you're here, they want to do it, and I think they should be allowed to, we should...
Would it be acceptable to do the presentation, and then have a little bit of a look at that proposal?
Sure.
Okay, let's do that.
How many people have one, I know a few people have one.
No, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to our town planner, Jessica Caldwell, who will walk through some town iterations for this future, long-term project, Godwowing, and then we'll have John Cresselate come up and talk about his presentation. We'll try to keep it brief, because we know people have time commitments and have to report.
Good afternoon, I'm Jessica Caldwell, I'm the town planner for the town of Newton. And this will be really brief, we just wanted to reiterate on the town's behalf that this is a four-and-a-half-acre redevelopment area, the Maguire redevelopment area within the center of our downtown, and so we're very interested in the long-term redevelopment of this parcel. And we're very happy that the college came forward, we had concerns at first, but in talking to the college, we think there's a lot of potential for long-term mutual collaboration and redevelopment of the site. So we just wanted to keep that in everybody's sort of forecast and future, and that it's not easy, it's definitely a collaborative effort, we think there needs to be public-private partnerships, it's not the easiest thing to achieve on behalf of all of these different public entities, but we want to keep it, you know, in your vision, that the town has a bigger vision for this property, and we're very happy to see, you know, the various examples of what colleges have done across the country, because we would like to see something like that happen in the town of Newton. So, you know, what the town manager asked myself and my firm to do was just put together, maybe a first-step potential of what else could be developed on the site in addition to the adaptive reuse of the Maguire buildings that are existing on the site. So what we looked at was essentially creating some kind of mixed-use residential and commercial building on the site, it would include approximately 4,000 square feet of commercial, and 16 units of residential per floor, with four floors above the mixed-use areas. This is just one opportunity, and there's plenty of parking on the site, there is a public, a town public parking lot behind the Maguire property that would allow for additional parking, there's a potential to have a public parking garage, so we'd really like to show that, you know, you could have up to 64 residential units, if not more, when, you know, architects were able to more fully design this type of building, and you have a nice continual street frontage along Main Street 206, essentially, providing for additional redevelopment. I think it's definitely in keeping with what Glassboro did in New Jersey as well, and these types of things don't have to be publicly funded, there's definitely opportunities for private developers to come in and make this type of development happen. So essentially, on the pictures and what you have are just some, basically a sketch-up, not fully designed building, but just can show, you know, the bulk and the size and the type of building that can occur on that property, along with the college. And I think one of the great opportunities here is that this could really offset the funding issues for the college in the long term. If you have a private developer come in and either purchase or land leaves this property, here's a huge funding source for the college. So I think there's a lot of opportunity, we showed a green roof where the culinary school can grow vegetables, so I think there's a lot of opportunity for exciting collaboration, and we just want to keep that in everybody's vision for this property, on behalf of the We have Mr. Cresselate, who's a developer in our town, along with Mr. McCabe, who's his planner, as well as his architect, and they have some other ideas for the property. So this is one idea, and there's certainly more, and we just want to keep that in everybody's vision and forefront. This is Mr. Cresselate, thank you.
All right, my mic's not working. John Cresselate, proud graduate of Vocational School of Year 1977. There we go, this event has been a little serious. I was actually voted my class clown my senior year, I'm very proud of that, had a fun life, didn't go to college, businessman in the county, grown from a one-man operation to a 35-person, growing concern, 35,000 square feet of manufacturing space, 25 years in, I didn't have anything, I felt like I couldn't say anything in the county or the town, because I didn't own property in the town, I started buying buildings, I now own five buildings in town, looking to do more, buying the Bula property in town, which is adjacent to this Maguire property. What I'm talking about is highly self-serving, but not only as a developer and entrepreneur, but also as somebody who cares about the county and cares about the town of Newton. A lot of people spoke today, the young gentleman who got up here, the bearded guy in the private session, I could not have said it better than him, you know, what he had to say about the college education that's possible here was well-served. We were building a building on the Bula property, that's going to have a restaurant on the first floor, residential above, we're looking to house, nobody's spoken about the Thor Labs investment in the town quite as much as I think we should. 10, 12 years ago, the Thor Labs, you know, was a, you know, there was a big question should have led to in town, and look what it's done for our town. You know, I think, as the town of Newton goes, so goes the county. You know, it's the ripple effect, you throw a small stone in the water, you're going to have small rivers, you throw a big stone in the water, you're going to have bigger rivers, it's going to affect the county in a bigger way. So, as a developer, we are interested in putting a building on the property to help subsidize this whole plan, we want to partner with the town, write a public partnership, to put up a building, operate it as a dual-use, I say, on the first floor, I'd like to see more retail, I'd like to see about 8,000, 10,000 square feet of retail, we're thinking 8,000 to 10,000 square feet for four, five to seven floors, outside residential on the top two floors, and dormitories in between. What I'd like to, you know, again, the self-serving portion of this is, yes, as a developer, I'm going to make money doing this, but as a businessman and as a committed taxpayer in the county and the town, I just, I see the opportunity for, and for other developers to want to come in, as someone said earlier, to want to come in and continue this process, and I'm not the only, and there are other people who are now interested in this project. We're not the only people who are interested in this. So, you know, just in conversation, this hasn't even gone out to public yet, in conversation, you have two or three different developers interested in coming to the town of Newton to develop this piece of property, so that the town doesn't lose its revenue, and, you know, I also think, as a developer, you know, person, whoever does development on the land, could also come in to help me maintain, to a certain extent, the school's building. I mean, you know, we are obviously going to have a bigger budget than you, you know, on that property, so, you know, maybe there's a way that we can kind of squeeze that in and work that out, that's all the conversation we have. Anyway, I'd like to turn this over to Wayne McCabe, our planner, and then he'll introduce our architect, Paul Heschman.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Wayne McCabe, I'm the planner for the project that we have seen before you, and I also bring a rather unique perspective as your county's historian. I look at this site as a very, very unique opportunity. Having gone to college upstate New York in a small town the size of Newton, the county seat of Delaware County, which is Deloitte, we had a two-year college there, and the relationship between the college and the town was a very good one, where one helped all, allowed... where one helped to allow for the growth of the community downtown because of the activity that the students had there and how the college ended up growing from what it was when I graduated almost 15 years ago to what it is today, which is considerably larger. The term was used here that this is quite the central town, college town, and I couldn't agree with any of my mark. The facility that we're looking at, the plan and the property, is very unique in the fact that it is the only redevelopment parcel in Newton in the middle of Town. It offers us an opportunity to help bring the college into the Town. For many, many years, many people have been trying to figure out a way to encourage the county and college to have facilities downtown so that they can integrate their students into our community instead of just being up on the college go. We're basically looking at trying to integrate the experience of the college education with the historic downtown Newton area. And I think that given the type of streetscape that we have on Main Street coming down to Spring Street, the college, by maintaining the facility it has for educational purposes and then developing the site with taxable property, will also offer a unique opportunity in terms of the site design so that it'll be complimentary to the downtown area. It'll provide housing that is needed in Newton for not only the residents of the Town, but also for college students. It'll provide more commercial area that'll be tied into or associated with the college. And I think that with the opportunity now for a collaborative effort between the Town, the college, and a private developer, we have a great opportunity in this instance to make something that is going to be very positive, very long-lasting, and something that we can all be very proud of when it's all done. In terms of the planning, as Jessica indicated, the Town has a vision of the area to be developed at a slightly greater increase or density than it's had it in the past. The parking lot that you see there now from McGuire, which was originally roofed before that, it was the park garage, was where two single-family houses, they were very large houses, on very large lots. And they were part of the streetscape. And what I'm suggesting here is that with the change that's been proposed by the college in terms of putting the greenery across the front of the property, that'll soften it up. It'll be much more harmonious to the streetscape that we want to see there. And that was a development of the site, as you'll see in a few moments, that that also can be developed sympathetically to the downtown area and the surrounding buildings. I would stress that the concept that you're going to hear a presentation on in a minute is conceptual. There's nothing locked in. It's to say that yes, it's doable in terms of the arrangement of building, parking, circulation, and pedestrian flow. And I would urge you to seriously take this into consideration as you're looking at what the college is proposing right now with McGuire property, knowing full well that there are people ready to walk in and work with the college and the Town to try to develop the site so that it will be a positive visual fiscal and physical improvement to our community. With that, I've spoken long enough. I'd like to move on to Paul Hekker, and he's the Architect for the Project.
Thank you, Wayne. I speak last now, I typically don't need it. My name is Paul Ashler. I am supervisor of PVA Architecture. It's okay with you, John and Wayne gave a great overview of the project. I just want to point to the center board, while I can take a minute of time to review what we're proposing. Again, Wayne is right. Completely conceptional, this is what I'm going to call a proof of concept. So, you guys have, both you guys have a handout. I know we only printed X number, but three, pretty much you see it here. This is the building that I'm working on, John is working for Free Street, which is the Google building. You can see the first floor, and it's going to be a restaurant, and then multiple stories of studios, one or two bedrooms above. Or down there, just some examples that I've heard of at scale type of dorm buildings that we expect to see in this set. But most importantly, it's this Google image where we've kind of overlaid colors, and I've given some peripheral information on it. So, to follow the planners and I know the architect's plan is to keep the green space off of Main Street. Completely agree. Want to have invited, you know, entrance into the town. Don't want to have that right now. Up there, you see a lot in this, six, seven years. So, keep this off of the street. Keep a pedestrian way in there, some seating, some coping type areas. And then with this multi-use building there, as John explained, I got a quick section here just so you can show it. First floor, some retail, open some food concepts. And there's a serve the people, and also hold people off the street. Multiple stories above, we're talking at four dorm levels right now. But again, proof of concept depends on what, you know, that's to see what you want. And then one or two floors above, more possibly medical center, area of need, public access. Pedestrian flow, obviously through the front. I'm assuming it would maybe stay around there. Because the resident would be for the college. They've got their cafe, they've got the same layout. And the trade buildings, I'm sure, is all background in here. So, be able to keep this all open for parking and their loading and usage. Most importantly for this, if the Town's requirements, you're going to need a parking garage. So, if you put something in the lot that's there, I think you have to stay a little bit further. Basic layout, something that's around 162 by 122 feet. Gets you around 62 stalls per floor. Depends on how high up the important parts are and what needs to be on the site. It's all within its own. That's pretty much the idea. Flow in and out from here, probably even venture all of the McGuire's lot. And it probably proposed with one-way traffic coming in. So, you've got 25 mile an hour, maybe 50 mile an hour zone. So, it's kind of got that campsite.
I just want to note that we've had some conversations with John Cuselley about this project. Absolutely nothing's written in stone, but we've had some talks about what it is we would like to do with the space in terms of power needs for student housing. He has indicated that he is certainly accommodated to that. He is certainly not the only developer who was interested in the property, as he has indicated there are other developers who are interested as well. But we do want to make it clear that we are working with the community in an effort to develop that property to make it as maximum gradeable as we can make it and to keep it also consistent with the McGuire campus of the Community College.
Thank you. I'm going to just move forward to the public center. Have a motion, hoping for the public. So, if you are looking to discuss, all of the favor, you propose. You guys have the floors open to the public. Please note, everyone's asked to keep the comps to five minutes or less. Only address issues regarding the items, followed by three-minute response time from freeholders before. And the rest of the floor, please. Everyone up here, please state your name, put your name and municipality on the signs.
Good afternoon. My name is Debbie Kiper, Vice Principal of Guidance here at Sussex Tech. I am also, as referenced by the woman sitting there, I'm a Deverlick that lives in Newton. I am a homeowner, resident of Newton for the past 14 years. I absolutely love the Town of Newton. And I've tidied some things down to kind of keep myself on track here. But to address first Newton and then the Sussex Tech Community College, I currently pay, I have a half-acre, I pay $13,754 and $22 cents a year in property taxes. Although I love the Town, the taxes are pushing families out of the Town. So, to make a decision that would raise my taxes over $14,000 a year is really hard to sit here and be okay with within the Town. I love the idea of the businesses coming in. Listen, I have a jog, I jog Spring Street all the time. I love it there. The businesses are not thriving there. We know that things need to be done. The one-way street, which costs, I think, $500,000 to do, didn't work, right? We now have the assisted living there with the business owners underneath the stores. Hopefully that works. I think that, you know, having the theater there will help, but I don't know that the college will or won't help. And not that I don't support it, but I don't support taxes over $14,000 if you live in Sussex County. It's really hard for many families to sustain and be able to stay here. So, it was hard, and I'm really emotional right now. I've worked here for 12 years. I was first the athletic director for nine years, and now I've been in guidance. This is my third year in guidance. And I'm very passionate about what we do and to listen to the Community College speak about our students as if they know and have spoken to them and know what their focus is and their mission is and what they're passionate about is just really hard to swallow. Because I am amazed every day still at the passion our students have for the trade they are in when they are here at Sussex County Technical School. We are extremely supportive of the Community College. We came here really with that thought that we are here to see how we can help each other. But you spent a majority of your time talking negatively about our students and our school. That's hard to hear. And I'm going to get emotional because it's just hard to hear. Um, sorry, just going to try to look at my notes a little bit here. You talk about satellite campuses. The college does have Cosmo program at Vernon. It's full, and their full capacity is nine students. We offered them to have the Cosmo program here. We have two Cosmo classrooms that seat 20 students each. They could be full at 40 students. They could do that, and our facilities need upgrades. Like, why not come here? We want you to be here, we want to work together. As far as the concurrent and articulation agreements, as you know, we've been working and really working for the past two years, if not longer, on creating articulation agreements with the college. Kathleen Carr is amazing, Cory's been great, Todd Holderstorf is great. So, like, we love working with the staff there. We want to continue to grow the Cosmo agreement we've had and within works over the past maybe six or eight months, we've been trying to do that. We want to do that again with the welding program. We have offered for the welding program, for them to offer to our students. So, our welding post-secondary program where they get AWS certification is full with 55 students. That's our full, 55 students. They're going to get credentials, they're AWS certified. We have offered that our students in that welding program, have the college come here and offer them to go and take their academic classes there and get their AAS. They can do that, or we already have the students here. Some of them may be interested in also getting an associate's degree. Come here, do that, the facility's here, we have it. As far as concurrent classes, so for maybe people in the public that aren't familiar, concurrent classes are where our teachers teach college classes. Our students earn college credit. We have great relationship with the college for that. We have 125 students last year enrolled for over 290 courses. So, we are supporting the college. So, to say our students are not focused, they're taking college credits, college classes, while they're high school students. We just added an advanced bio class. We have 26 students in that class, that is. And we turned three students away because we are full. And again, our full is 26 students per class, really 25, because we over-enrolled it. But, and they're going to get the concurrent class for Bio 1 and Bio 2 at the college. Okay, so they're going to get eight credits while they're at high school, taking that course. So, we've been extremely supportive of the college, we want to be supportive. But please, invite the freeholders. I would love to be on the committee with the college and the freeholders to support and see how we can work together. Thank you.
Anyone else want to follow up?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Stacy Crossan, and I've worked at Sussex Tech for over 15 years now. And I am a supervisor of CTE program, and I'm also an administrator. Today's meeting was a little bit of a surprise to me as far as the intent of the meeting. I have always supported the efforts between the Sussex County Technical School and the Sussex County Community College. But during today's presentation, there were several inaccuracies that I feel that my superintendent, Mr. Madla, did already touch on, but I wanted to elaborate a little more. For example, stating that Sussex County has been a last resort is very insulting to me and to our students, to our faculty, to the residents of the county. Although Mr. Madla has done a fabulous job in his past five years being at Sussex County Technical School, for the past 15 years, our school has not been a last resort here. Mr. Madla's been here the past five, and he's continued to keep it rolling. But that is a major inaccuracy when you state that we've been a last resort. Secondly, our CTE instructors, our industry-credentialed, degreed professionals, many of us, including myself, have master's degrees. So, saying that when we're teaching automotives and talking about a round tire is gross inaccuracy. Our teachers are certified NATEF professionals, and so are our students upon graduation. So, please get your facts straight. As far as economic contribution to the community, to our county, Sussex Tech has turned out more electricians, cosmetologists, and mechanics in this county over the past 50 years that are professionally certified individuals. Having a degree is optional for some of those professions. Although, as a degreed professional myself, I can see the value in having a degree. The professionals that we've turned out have done extremely well in our community. You also spoke about partnerships and opportunities that you believe your college could offer that we don't have here. Well, you're wrong, because our school, if you took the time to get to know us, you would understand that we have advisory boards. And on our advisory boards that we hold here, we have many professionals that participate in our community days, our partnership day, and they contribute to what we teach our students. Also, you inaccurately reflected what your college can do as far as structured learning experiences. CTE education in the state of New Jersey requires what's called SLEs, where we also provide cooperative education, apprenticeships, and internships right here on our campus, that we allow our students to go out and work within the community. We also partner with the several businesses that you've mentioned. Another inaccuracy was when you talk about interrupted study, and you can do better than us. You're unaware that we have block scheduling here, and we also have interrupted study for our students. When you spoke of your culinary program, our students also learn front of the house, back of the house, and we also have a restaurant in our building. And our students earn college credits at some of the most prestigious universities around. We also have a CIA graduate teaching bakery and culinary and pastry arts at our program. We have a dynamic, dynamic culinary program here at Sussex Tech. You could probably learn a lot from us, and we could partner together, and we can enhance what we already have. Your presentation also stated that students are turned away every year in CTE education. That is a fact, and I want you to all know that. If we had more funding here at Sussex Tech from the freeholders and from the community, we would be able to accept more students that we've also had to turn away. We've been flat-funded for many, many years, and we've continued to thrive and make the school the great place that it is. So, when you say you're getting excitement from people in the community, from business people, sure, they may be excited because it'll benefit the businesses. But you're also getting excitement from the residents who say enough to the high taxes and stop duplicating services. That's what we're saying. I'm a resident in this county. I'm saying, stop what you're doing, stop duplicating what we're already doing here, and partner with us to make us even better and stronger. We're not here to save Newton. I love Newton too. We want to do good things in Newton, we all have that. But the point is, we're talking about sharing services within our county. is, we're talking about sharing services within our county. And I'm urging the freeholders to look at us and see what the great things that we've done here in this county, the buck stops here. We need to stop duplicating services and grow our school more. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Director Rose. The 175 increase in taxes, was that for Newton or is that for countywide? You did those calculations.
That was based, that is, the amount that Newton taxpayers will subsidize each student at SCCC, assuming a 300 person, 300 student enrollment, a 66% non-high level amount of taxes.
Okay. And I have a question for Mr. Tion, if you could. For example, if we were to ask for a $6 increase county-wise on our taxes, what would that net our school? Do you have those figures, or could you do those figures very quickly?
Give me a second, I think I can figure that out.
Just to be clear, there's a word, the number I quoted was not the increase to the average taxpayer, it was the amount subsidized.
With assumptions, from the director. And among those assumptions, would there be no alternative income, which is the point of the partnership with Newton? So that eventuality is far less likely, or not likely at all. Okay, I did do the calculation, and with respect to the question that was asked to me, based on my most recent audit figures of the net valuation taxable dollars, a $6 per household increase would net Sussex Tech $272,000.
Thank you. And Judge Parker may be able to answer this question. In that CNC program that you're doing with Thor Labs, how many students are currently enrolled in that program?
I'm sorry, I-
The CNC program with Thor Labs, how many students are currently enrolled?
I'm going to stand up, because I think they can hear me better. The program, Thor Labs, is a machine tool program, and how many students do we have in there right now?
We have 11 students in that program now.
11 students in that program, okay. Just for example, here at Sussex Tech, we have 80 students in our machining tool program. My last question will be directed to the, to, what's your name?
Jason.
Jason. You spoke about industry credentials, and that's a big part of it. So with your welding program, are you going to be able to get AWS certified?
Our goal, our projection is to be allowed to offer the AWS certifications, yes.
You are aware that Sussex Tech is the only testing facility?
As of right now, yes.
Okay. Also, so you spoke with your career credentials, so what is that master's certification?
In regards to my own?
Yeah, I mean, that's-
Prior to leaving industry, I had, I'm certified for Lexus, BMW, Toyota, Scion, and started with Maserati, Ford, actually have industry help resources.
And you support ASE?
I support ASE plus industry protections.
Right. So you're obviously master certified ASE.
Sorry?
You're master certified ASE, obviously.
I was.
You were, okay. So, one of the things that I took offense to was the way you spoke to our school for our individuals here that are educators. I too am master certified. That is not a fair assumption to say that our instructors are not master certified, that we're not master graduates. I said I would never use the example, and I'm going to regret myself. ASE certified technicians in this country are 300,000 plus. There are 11 individuals in the country who are certified master in every ASE category. Next month, I will take my final two, and that number will go to 12, so no longer say there are no professionals teaching in the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
I'm going to just stand up because I think I can be heard better than the microphone.
Mr. Kuselait, she's going to respond.
If you would just give me a minute, Mr. Kelski. First of all, I want to apologize to VOTech people, if I gave the impression that we were denigrating the VOTech, it was not my intention at all. I have the highest regard for what you've done here, and I thought I started out with that, but obviously I did not make it clear. When I was talking about the VOTech being a school of last resort, I was talking back in the 1970s when I was on the Sparta school board. That's a long time ago.
Do you have a waiting?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Do you have a waiting?
Okay, I understand that, but that's my, that was exactly my point, that it is not a school of last resort, it is such in demand that you have waiting lists, and that you have people who can't get in. So I was, I apologize if I gave that impression. And the other aspect of it is, I understand that you have very well qualified students graduating here. And my point in the very beginning when I said, I took math, science, and English in elementary school, I took math, science, and English in high school, I took math, science, and English in college, but they weren't the same thing, they were at different levels. And that's what our point was, and we were emphasizing the degree aspect, because that's what everything in our society and in our labor statistics tells us that we need. I understand that there are exceptional people who graduate and they don't need it, they graduate here at the VOTech, and they don't need a degree. But we are being told over and over again, Department of Labor Statistics, over and over again, that the degree makes a difference. So I really do apologize, I didn't mean to denigrate the VOTech at all. I think what Gus has done here is fantastic, I think what you, as the instructors, do here is amazing every day. And you go every day through these programs, and I commend you for that and for what you produce here. What I'm suggesting is that we are going a notch farther. It's going from high school math, science, and English to college math, science, and English. That's what I'm suggesting.
I just want to clarify, I appreciate all the support and the nice accolades that were directed towards me, but this would not be possible unless the three people sitting out front here who just spoke and the entire Sussex County Technical School staff and board, we're a team, we're a partner, that's why we're successful, and it didn't start with me, I just, I was lucky enough to get hired here at that time, and I appreciate everybody here for working very hard.
Richard Kelski still there. I'm glad that you did take the time to apologize, Judge Parker, unfortunately, the audience mostly left. As of right now, I have absolutely no idea what the scope of this project is. I understood this meeting to deal with the project being proposed by, McGuire project being proposed by SCCC. There's a purported budget of that project of 4.2 million dollars. As I leave here, this project is such a combination of convoluted and conflated proposals, I have no idea what it is, and the chairman of the college has said that they will not produce to the public the budget for this project. And by budget, I mean the complete and total development budget, capital expenses, and operating expenses projected forward. What we're getting right now is a little piece at a time, and why we can't get an answer to these questions makes no sense to me. This theory of legal counsel advice to not produce a budget makes no sense to me. Everybody has a budget for a project, every company, everywhere, and since this is public funding, that budget must be released to the public. If this project goes forward, in whatever form it goes forward, since the college is so concerned with the support of the public and companies, once the Phase 2 environmental is completed and remediation has been completed, I suggest that you ask the Maguires to donate the property to the college as part of support for this project. I don't understand how selling a property at commercial prices, at high commercial price in my view, is somehow a great deal for the college. So I think you should be going back to the table. If the freeholders won't demand it of you, I will ask them, go back to the table and ask them to donate the property. And start at that point. Let's not start at commercial rates that have nothing to do with a 100-year-old property that is environmentally troubled. So, if, what they say is, we can't beat a joint, so it's apparent to me that everybody is going to do something here that's going to move this project forward. So why don't you try to move it forward on a basis that's not economically disadvantageous to this county? And so I make that suggestion to you in all, with all respect, and with hopes that you can actually bring the numbers to the table, to the public, and get the contribution of that property to the college, and start behaving responsibly with the taxpayers' money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Now I want to speak from the bright aspect. John Kuselait, business owner in Sussex, in Newton. So, right now you drive into Newton, from Newton Sparta Road, Newton's the county seat. What you see on the left side of Newton Sparta Road is a beautiful building that Thor Labs has built. It's a campus, it's where 350 people work, eat, play, okay? It's spreading out in our town. On the other side of town, you drive up 206, and what do you see when you drive up? You see an empty parking lot. How is that good for this county? I'm asking you guys, how is that good for this county? And we drive, what I want to see, whether it's, whether it's the school or something else, the school's got a great, great proposal, a green space, the kids coming down from the colleges and being part of the town community, that's good for the county, because it's going to, people drive up from Princeton, that's the only way to get up, is 206, drive into town for the first time, you see, you see an empty parking lot. This county's dead. You put a green space there, you put a building behind it, it starts to bring life to the town, it brings life to the county. I'm not a politician, I'm not an educator, I'm a businessman. What I know is, that if you bring development to the town and to the county, the county will make money, the town will make money, we will grow, we will be whole.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Seeing no one in the public, I have a motion to close the meeting in public. So, I want my little arms, like, if I are in discussion, all is in favor, opposed, guys have it, the floor is closed to the public. Thank you, everyone for coming, we're going to close our meeting, and then you'll need to close yours, and you've already closed ours, so we'll take it.
Actually, everybody kind of closed out during the session.
We're going to close our meeting. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, open the adjournment agreement, second by the pillow of discussion, all is in favor, opposed, guys have it, meeting.
I have a motion to adjourn.